Call to order the May 7, 2024 Eugene Water and Electric Board Board Meeting. I'm going to start with the facility and safety awareness meeting. The logistics briefing. So thank you all for being here tonight. The EWEB management and subject matter experts are present in the room and virtually. The meeting is being live streamed and recorded. Please speak loudly and clearly so everyone can hear you. Public testimony is welcome. If you're here to testify in person, please use one of the signup forms that are available at the back of the room. Actually, at the front of the room. Visitor access is limited to the board meeting room and the restrooms. Restrooms are located on the first floor. Exit through the interior door at the back of the room over here. And a security officer will direct you to the location. In the event of an emergency such as a fire or security incident, please follow all the instructions given by staff. If evacuation is required, please calmly proceed to the nearest safe exit as identified and directed by staff and evacuate away from the building to the farthest points of the parking lots to allow clear and immediate access for first responders. For those of you who are here tonight to provide public testimony, our agenda has that beginning at about six o'clock. So we'll address a few other issues first and then go into public testimony then. So starting with agenda, if anybody have comments, questions, adjustments to the agenda. I can see none. Moving to the next items from board members and Gerald the manager.
Yes, I had the opportunity to tour the site plan for the new water treatment plant over in Glenwood with staff, some of our consultants, some of the people that will be. Yes. But giving giving input on the impacts that we may have on it. So it was Oregon Fish and Wildlife Department, I think it was National Marine Fisheries, those types of things. So we toured the where the intake is going to be. We went up to the top of the hill where the the treatment plan is going to be. And then we got a little bit of a cursor from our consultants on the work that they're doing as to what will happen when when we start taking water out of the laminate and the effect that that may have on all kinds of things, whether it's marine life, those types of things. One of the things that I found that was very interesting was that at peak at peak withdrawal, if we were to take all the water out that we could, when the when the river was at its lowest, which is usually in October, not when we take peak deep water out, which is usually in the higher times of years. The river, we drop up between a quarter and a half of an inch possibly at that full thing. And so we have to, we go through and we study what that effect will have on like a sandbar. If there's a sandbar that's got aquatic life, how far? How much more of that sandbar is going to be exposed? What will that have on some of the creatures we're doing? So it was very interesting. The the consultants that we have, you know, they were out in the middle of, they've been out in the middle of the the river with LiDAR and taking taking measurements on all of this type of stuff to make sure that we can take the water that we're entitled to to help serve our community going forward without having an ecological impact on our on our water set and those types of things. So it's very interesting. Way more complicated than you think it's going to be. You can't just put a pipe in the in the river and start taking it out without going through and making sure that we're not doing it responsibly. And that was very enlightening, enlightening to go on that tour.
Yeah, I know that we have agendas, future agendas at the end of the meetings that I wanted to get this out at the beginning of the meeting. I know we have the city manager coming here in June to talk to us about what their proposal is to increase the EWEB bill through some of their charges. And I, for one, am going to be, I have a lot of questions, a lot of concerns about stacking city functions through stormwater fees or a fire fee under the EWEB bill. It's still an EWEB bill. And I have a real hard time digesting turning somebody's power off because they're not, because we raised it. And and I know they're broke, but I want to make sure that we get that in future time because I would like to have a really good discussion with others about that. I know we can't stop them. But we can certainly talk about it.
Are you saying you want a discussion with this board before you follow the city manager?
No, I want to hear what she has to say and then and then go from there because I, you know, I just look at things like the school district, you know, they're not supposed to be paying operating costs of the farm, let's say, but they still pay a stormwater fee. You take the stormwater fee and increase it 25%. That's fair. They can do it, but is it worth it?
So you probably know where I'm coming down on this unless I, if not the otherwise. Frank?
Yeah, President McCray, I certainly appreciate Commissioner Brown's perspective. The primary purpose for City Manager Maderi visiting in June is to provide an update on where the city is at with their various alternative financing, including potentially working with EWEB on different options. So this is an initial orientation session. So bringing your questions, your your guidance, your oversight to that discussion would be valuable, I think, both for this board as well as the city manager. We, under city code, are directed to collect stormwater and wastewater fees on an annual basis. They do vary what those fees are. That's that's an agreement through code that's gone back decades. But relative to how those are handled, how those are collected, I think it would be useful for this board to give that some thought as to how those are administrated. So look forward to that. Initial conversation probably won't be the last conversation.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we understand.
Others?
Anything else from you? Just just one more thing. This is Drinking Water Week. And so I know the board got a preliminary look at our Consumer Confidence Report. That's a statutorily required report that EWEB puts out on an annual basis. This is for 2023, highlighting a number of different things from a regulatory perspective, from a water quality perspective, including our adherence to the the lead, the updated lead and copper rule, which is a federal regulation. And so that'll be published shortly, but have to commend the the Water Division and the Communications Division for putting that together. And I'm assuming that there'll be more questions potentially about that later. But that's all I've got.
Thanks. Moving to correspondence.
Yes, President McCray, commissioners, there were two items of correspondence. I'll start with the update on EWEB's compliance with the Oregon RPS or Renewable Portfolio Standard. This, sorry, EWEB is obligated as a large utility to meet certain requirements of our generation portfolio with renewables. There are some exceptions. If you go through this, you'll you'll notice that the calculation is pretty complex and it allows for what's called legacy hydro, which the combination of EWEB assets and Columbia assets through Bonneville, there's a large exemption, which we don't get credit for, but we don't get penalized for. And so in this case, had a slight obligation to retire some renewable energy credits as part of meeting that obligation, a small amount relative to the bank that we have through the years. So that that was one item. And then the other one was an update on EWEB's approach to EV charging equipment. This is a question that's come up recently. We take kind of a very direct approach to it. EWEB does receive energy credits through the state as an EV aggregator. So those are based on the number of EVs in our service territory. We use those funds to invest directly back into the support of that particular type of electrification. It's a very direct approach in the sense that both the incentives as well as costs that may be incurred by customers come through that program. There were some questions about things such as service upgrades. There's also grants as well as loans that are funded through that program as opposed to being completely rate based and socialized across our entire customer base. Both the incentives as well as for for both the EV equipment itself, as well as any upgrades tend to come through that program. If there's some further questions on that, we can elaborate. I know that Assistant General Manager Price, as well as Juan Serpa Munoz, who really administrates and leads that program, would be would be available. I know the request came to do more as far as rate base. I think that's something that we would want to include in our rate making and rate design discussions, which according to the updated agenda, Board Agenda Report, looking to kick that off in August with the board. And that would be, those kinds of topics would be part of how we're going to approach to general rates going forward.
Thanks, President. Certain comments on either of those items? I want to say thanks to the staff who offered those memos. It's really helpful to have that that background information. So appreciate the effort. All right. The next item on the agenda is public input. So I'll give a very quick introduction. Welcome to those of you who are here in the room and those on on the phone who are here to provide public input for this session. This portion of the agenda is dedicated to providing community members an opportunity to address the board about any EWEB topic or issue. We respectfully request all speakers adhere to EWEB's public input instructions and code of conduct that are provided during the sign up to speak process. And there here on the screen as well. We have 10 people signed up to provide testimonies. We have six on the phone and four here in person. When your name is called, you'll have three minutes to provide your comments. There's a clock at the front that helps you keep track. So with that, we're going to start with the folks who are on the phone. The public input session is now open. We'll begin with Nina Beatty, followed by Melinda Stone. Nina?
Hi.
Hello. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can. Thanks, Nina.
Thank you. I'm an investigative writer. My name is Nina Beatty. And I live in Monterey, California. I'm an investigative writer researching smart meters since 2009. I was surprised to read articles that quoted EWEB that were appearing in local media in Oregon and in EWEB's press release last month. The problems with smart meters are well known nationally and internationally. However, instead of relying on facts from consumer organizations, physicians, engineers, fire investigators, cybersecurity experts and other experts, even industry disclosures, some EWEB personnel appear to be relying on utility industry marketing and false assurances that have been repeatedly debunked for at least 10 years. Overbilling, fire and electrical hazards, health and environmental effects, including negative impacts to bees and trees, susceptibility to hacking, interference with electronics, system costs and privacy invasion. Census Smart Meters have been subject to several recalls, including in Portland and Saskatchewan. And a complaint by a Census whistleblower fired for alerting the company to defects that could cause fires was a number of years ago. I've covered many of these problems in my reports to California officials in 2012 and on fire and electrical hazards in 2017, and they're on my website, smartmeterharm.org. The hacking risk has been repeatedly warned about. A B C Hydro official warned years ago that each meter is a new potential threat factor to the grid. Analog meters have a direct connection to ground, but smart meters are not grounded and have inadequate surge protection. They also have other vulnerabilities. So fire and electrical hazards are a real problem. In 2010, the Electric Power Research Institute extolled the state of art and unsurpassed quality of analog meters. Smart meters only last five to seven years, industry official Bennett Gaines told Congress in 2015 versus the long life of analog meters and all the other costs that go with the system and the refunds and credits to customers when the billing system doesn't work or anomalous high bills occur with regularity. Also, what about the exposure under real world conditions or FCC violations reported by experts during California hearings? ADA and Fair Housing Act protects disabled persons, including EWEB customers disabled by electromagnetic sensitivity, which is recognized by the Federal Access Board, and well as other EMF sensitive medical conditions. Reasonable accommodation of analog meters in proximity to a home or workplace for all who need it is simple and easy to accomplish. As a public agency, we are not allowed to discriminate against disabled persons. In California, a judge ruled that a municipal utility had to provide an analog meter at no charge for disabled customers. Opt out fees are surcharges and not allowed under ADA. By failing to provide reasonable accommodation of an analog meter, EWEB would be probably violating state law as well as well as choosing to provide service. Evidence based sites are investigating and I have more information I can provide.
Thank you so much. Thanks for calling in. Melinda Stone, followed by Kathy Geng. Melinda, are you there?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Melinda. Go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. I've lived in Eugene since the fall of 2018, having a fully functional analog meter on our house, getting utility services from EWEB, the only available utility service for my home, making EWEB a monopoly, which violates the Sherman Antitrust Act. EWEB and EWEB's attorneys have been mailing threatening letters to me telling me that I have no choice but to accept a digital meter for utility services or they will cut off my service. I've been an excellent customer of EWEB, to the point that I carry a credit balance of $100 on my account every month. I cannot have a digital meter on our house because I was made ill by a digital meter when living in the Bay Area in 2013, when PG&E installed a bank of electric digital meters in our apartment building without notifying anyone of their action. For three days, I suffered from severe headaches, brain fog, and was confined to bed, not aware of the cause until I left our apartment and saw door hangers on the doorknobs alerting people of PG&E's new digital meters. I never fully recovered from the health ailments while living in our apartment and was reliant on over the counter sleep aids and pain relievers until we moved to Oregon. I know there are many people who can live with high amounts of electromagnetic frequencies and radiation, but I can't. I experienced pain from radiating meters, digital meters within 20 to 30 feet. And our analog meter is up against the back wall of our house on the outside of a bedroom and bathroom wall. The analog meter does not radiate dirty electricity and I do not suffer ill effects from our analog electric meter. As a consumer, I have a right to not be harmed by products and services that I choose not to wish to have. The Americans with Disabilities Act protects me and prevents governments and businesses from harming people like me. EWEB must respect all state and federal laws or risk being sued. EWEB can be prevented from accessing any federal grants or funds if they are found to be violating anti discrimination laws like the ADA. I've sent EWEB a notice to cease and desist their demand to force a digital meter on our house. EWEB has chosen to continue the threats of harm by threatening to cut off water and electric and electric service to my house. Stop it immediately. I am not harming EWEB or any other EWEB customer by leaving the analog meter alone. I am responsible utility customer. This is my verbal notice to EWEB to cease and desist in your attempt to extort me or threaten to cut off essential life services. EWEB must obey all laws. Thank you.
Thanks, Melinda. Next is Kathy Geng, followed by Alan Gormezano. Kathy?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Kathy. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Kathy Geng. It's curious to get a note from a house insurance company about getting a free Ping, P-I-N-G, for my house to alert about fires. Of all home fires, the most disruptive are electrical. According to the National Fire Protection Association, an electrical fire breaks out every 10 minutes. Perhaps the word is leaking out how fires can trigger via wireless smart meters, which EWEB is now attempting to mandate on all homes. Did the board vote to shut off electricity for people with stewards? What about people on medical devices that require electricity? Smartmeterharm.org has an excellent report on smart meter fires. Another, the discovery and science of smart meter fires from 2021 was sent to EWEB City Council and Lane County Board of Commissioners. Why, when you are involved in so many lawsuits, not even having enough coverage, only $50 million for the $500 million requested for the Holiday Farm Fire alone, why would you invite more lawsuits by mandating wireless smart meters on homes of those who want to protect health, privacy, homes and the grid itself? Circuit Kurt told me there were so many lawsuits against EWEB, one had to go to the courthouse in order to research the numbers to find the numbers from the files themselves. They can't even give you over the phone. Responding to EWEB's increasingly ominous threat to turn off utility services for those forced to choose between health and electricity, some senior citizens are now going off the grid. Thanks, EWEB, for not stewarding the people you are in charge of taking care of. Am I, is my time up?
One minute left, Kathy.
Okay, well, I want to say that women's bodies don't lie. Women are more vulnerable to this technology, folks. I've been working on this for 13 years, over 8,000 hours of research. And women, unfortunately, because of the bone structure, et cetera, are more vulnerable. And that's why you are hearing a lot from women. And thank you for your public service. But please, please pay attention to what you're doing. Bye.
Thank you, Kathy. Next is Alan Gormezano, followed by Sabrina Siegel. Alan?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Hang on, let me do my timer here. Okay, I have been an EWEB customer since 1999 with no breaks. One of the things that I'm finding here is an incredible insensitivity to the customers, especially ones like me who've been with this company for a very long time. You know, there's so much debunking going on about, you know, what we believe and see from our studies about smart meters being safe versus what we see and believe about our smart meters not being safe. You know, basically, anything can be proven with studies. It depends on who's funding the study, who wants what results from the study. You can't always trust studies. Now, there's something beyond that, something beyond science, and that's people's experience. You know, you've got, a long time ago, miners discovered that if they brought a canary in a cage in a mine, the canary would pass out long before, long before people would pass out. And was it proven scientifically? No, they just trusted it. We have a lot of canaries in our community, people who are more sensitive to maybe the board members are who are pushing this on us, who are threatening us, who are making ultimatums. And with those ultimatums, people have responded by using terms like Gestapo tactics. And to that, the board and EWEB has responded, oh, that's so insensitive to say that and it's dangerous. Well, you know, you're forcing us. You are forcing, forcing, forcing. Allow us, who don't want to have more electronic smog in our life, to want to minimize the amount of electronic smog, to have that right, to have that choice. We deserve that choice. We deserve our health. This is a city that prides itself on being pro-choice, diversity, sensitivity. This city and you, EWEB, especially needs to practice those qualities in regard to people choosing less electrosmog over more. I have been in places where there is no cell phone service. There's nothing. And as soon as you cross that ridge, all of a sudden, everything feels peaceful and relaxed. I've gone into caves, have the same experience. All of a sudden, I can sense the difference. It is calm. It is relaxed. We are being inundated with so much. We've had things claim to be safe in my life, fluoroscope, standing in front of an X-ray machine, DDT and kids' hair for lice, thalidomide causing birth defects, 245T sprayed in the forest causing birth defects. All the medicines that have been pulled off the market were all claimed to be safe and they weren't. So maybe you can go with us on this one and realize maybe these smart meters are not safe.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Just Sabrina Siegel, followed by Stephen Junkas. Sabrina?
Hello.
Hey, we can hear you, Sabrina. Go ahead.
Do you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'm another person who received a, you know, about to be have your utilities turned off letter and or email. And I want to say, you know, we're fighting for our lives here, basically. I'm going to read you my doctor's letter for my request for disability accommodation to EWEB to keep my analog meter as my accommodation and as my ability to breathe and function in any activity are severely impacted by EMS and RF. And here is my doctor's letter, and she is a well-known expert in this area. She's spoken before Congress on this issue, Sharon Goldberg. And she addresses to Frank Lawson and to whom it concerns, board. I am a board certified internal medicine physician licensed in New Mexico and Florida. Sabrina Siegel previously consulted with me as a subject matter expert in the field of electromagnetic field EMF associated illness. I was course director instructor of record for the International EMF Medical Conference in 2021 and currently teach and peer review in areas of medicine applicable to Sabrina's case. Sabrina has been previously diagnosed with medical chemical, sorry, multiple chemical sensitivity and overexposure to non-ionizing radiation, sequelae, ICD-10W90, lots of numbers, commonly referred to as electromagnetic hypersensitivity, EHS, and referred to in the older medical literature as microwave syndrome. For purposes of this letter, overexposure to microwave radiation, microwave syndrome and electromagnetic hypersensitivity are interchangeable. It is my opinion that Sabrina requires accommodation from your utility company as she consistently gets cardiac symptoms triggered by smart meter exposures. To clarify, digital meters, also known as smart meters, AMI, AMR, and other by other terms, emit both radio frequency radiation, RF, EMF and electromagnetic radiation in lower frequency ranges. Even when installed in a non-transmitting mode with the RF transmitter turned off, the meters emit powerful EMR, including dirty electricity that commonly produces symptoms in Sabrina as well as others. Because Sabrina has significant cardiovascular symptoms related to RF and EMF emissions from digital meter exposures in other situations and gyno type chest pressure, I am very concerned about the health effects that may result from placing a digital utility meter on of any kind, water, electric or gas transmitting or non-transmitting on her home. My biggest concern is for arrhythmias, blah, 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 blah. The needed accommodation for Sabrina is that she be exempted from placement of any smart meter, any smart meter of any type, water, gas, electric meter on her home. Uh huh. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Next is Stephen Junkas, and then we'll go to the folks in the room. Stephen?
My name is Stephen Junkas. I do not live in Eugene, but I'm an attorney representing many EWEB customers, including Sabrina. including Sabrina, who do not want smart meters placed on their homes. You may have heard my name. I spent the last three years filing lawsuits to stop tyrannical behavior by government. I have a couple of points I want to bring to your attention. Your website talks about safety. It says that smart meters are safe because you are following SEC guidelines. But in 2021, the DC Court of Appeals, one level below the US Supreme Court, ruled that the SEC's safety guidelines were arbitrary and capricious. Arbitrary and capricious. The Court of Appeals ordered the SEC to go back to the drawing board. As a result, the SEC's guidelines are nullity. They mean nothing, they offer no assurance of safety. Yet you are telling the public that smart meters are safe because they are within the SEC guideline, as if those guidelines were valid, when you know that those guidelines have been ruled to be arbitrary and capricious. You are perpetrating a fraud on the public. Second, you are violating disability law. You must accommodate those who are sensitive to electromagnetic radiation. Your proper accommodation is to turn off the radio transmission. That does not address the problem, because the meters cause harm even when the radio transmission is turned off. You are failing to address the necessary accommodation for the harm caused by your meters with the radio transmission turned off. To follow the law, the burden is on you to show that allowing customers to keep their analog meters would impose an undue burden on your business. You cannot possibly make that showing, because you are the ones making the change. You are ripping out perfectly good analog meters and replacing them with dangerous meters. It would be like if the city of Eugene ripped out all the wheelchair ramps on the city sidewalks, then told the disabled there'd be an undue burden to put them back. You cannot assert undue burden to not make a change to a homeowner's meter. You need to halt the installation of the smart grid in Eugene immediately and permanently. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. And we'll go to the folks here in the room. So next is Dennis Porter, followed by Wanda Meck.
Good evening. I was going to come to talk about this photo, which I have emailed to you weeks ago. And I wrote, so just to describe this, this is me talking to a meter technician at my front porch, and there are two security guards not visible to me alongside my house. This photo was taken by a neighbor who just happened to be going out to his car at that time. And the photo created a great deal of anxiety for me. I've mentioned this several times in emails, and yesterday, I sent an email to Mr. Lawson asking three questions of, you know, why were there two security guards? Why was, why did they come to my home? And I was pleased to receive a courteous reply this afternoon, just a couple hours ago. And I understand Mr. Lawson's position and his care for his employees. However, I want to emphasize that this fact of what happened to me created severe anxiety that I have been living with for the last month. In addition to the series of letters that has been described as threats from E-Web about disconnection of service if we don't allow smart meters to be installed. And those letters also create significant anxiety. I'm sure none of you would want to be in a position where you don't know if your electricity is going to be turned off tomorrow or not. That alone, that threat is very distressful. In addition to that, as you, I think, know, KEZI interviewed me a couple of times recently. And in their stories about me, the, there were, you know, two or three clips of my comments, and all the rest of it was about E-Web. And people seeing that get the impression, and have the specific impression about me, that I have issued violent threats. Well, that is not...
So really, three minutes? Yeah, it's been, go ahead and finish your thought.
I'm sorry, the, people, I understand it's not in your control entirely, but you do have some responsibility for the fact that in your public statements, you have lumped all of us who are not in agreement with the smart meters for the reasons that the prior speakers on the phone have mentioned and many more. You have a lot of evidence of harm. And at the very, and when all of your public statements are about the threats, and there's no acknowledgement that there is a lot of data from serious professionals that raise questions and concerns. And we are asking for at least two things. You know, the ideal would be to not install any of the meters. And the second thing would be to give a small number of people under your own comments, to give a small number of people and everyone the choice to have a true opt-out. When you say opt-out, it's misleading, because it's still a smart meter.
Thanks, thank you, Wanda.
Thank you.
Money. Next is Wanda Meck, followed by Cindy Allen.
Good afternoon. My name is Wanda Meck. I'm 72, and I have lived in Eugene since 2018. I'm a good E-Web customer, and I pay my bill on time every month. I'm also a unique individual with health issues that cause me to wish to avoid as much radiation as possible. This is very difficult in the radiation-intensive world in which we live. One would hope that within their own home, they might be able to have the ability to protect their health, to live safely, and to have a sanctuary that the outside world may not provide. E-Web wishes to put smart meters on every home in Eugene, but this initiative does not take into account the needs of individual customers. It is stated that smart meters are safe, and especially in opt-out mode, they quote, "preserve access to utility services while limiting electromagnetic exposure," end quote. This quote is from a letter I recently received from E-Web. The letter does not state that there is no electromagnetic exposure, and it does not guarantee that once a smart meter is installed, it will never be switched into communicating mode without the customer's knowledge and consent. Around 2011, I was diagnosed with a tumor in my ear canal called acoustic neuroma. My first symptom was tinnitus in my right ear. Growth of these tumors can result in the necessity for invasive, life-threatening surgery, because they are close to the brain. They are also near the facial nerve, and surgery can result in facial paralysis. I have already lost hearing in my right ear. More and more research is showing that cellphone radiation can cause these tumors, especially if they are located in the ear most often used for cellphone calls, which mine is. They are slow growing, so it has taken years for research to come to this conclusion. It is my goal to avoid surgery, so I try to limit my exposure to radiation. Now I find myself in a struggle with E-Web, because you want to attach a radiation-producing device onto my home. In addition to the tumor, I also have sleep apnea that is treated with a CPAP machine for which I need electricity. I am being threatened with having my electricity cut off because I want to keep my analog meter. The CPAP machine has not resolved all of my sleep issues. Since moving to Eugene in 2018, I find I sleep through night only two to three times a week. I have been unable to find a cause for this after working with several doctors and trying a number of treatments. My neighbor that I share duplex with accepted a smart meter when I opted out several years ago. I have a neighbor behind my apartment who also accepted a smart meter. My sleep has deteriorated since moving to this apartment. Sleep disruptions is one of the primary symptoms that people with electromagnetic and radio frequency sensitivities report. Tinnitus is another symptom. I already have tinnitus and hearing loss in my tumor ear. I cannot afford to experience tinnitus in my good ear or to risk the tumor growing. Other symptoms that sensitive people report are anxiety and musculoskeletal issues, both of which I'm experiencing. Since I'm obviously an individual who is high-risk for further exposure to radiation, much of which I cannot avoid, I should be able to avoid this exposure in my own home by keeping my analog meter, which is working properly. Accepting any meter that exposes me to any radiation at all is not advisable. The American Academy of Environmental Medicine recognizes that patients are being adversely impacted by EMF and RF fields and are becoming more electromagnetically sensitive. Because smart meters produce radio frequency emissions, they recommend that patients with conditions like mine should be accommodated to protect their health, and that no smart meter should be placed on these patients' homes, that smart meters should be removed within a reasonable distance of patients' homes, and that no collection meter should be placed near patients' homes, depending on their symptoms. Thank you for your attention.
Thanks very much. Next is Cindy Allen, followed by Joshua Corn.
In 2013, a six-person medical advisory board did an 18-month study on RF radiation. A two-hour presentation, 140 pages, was given to the board. YouTube, Dr. Paul Dart, E-Web Smart Meter Health Hazards. In 2013, the board voted for opt-in to the smart meter. You called if wanted one. In 2018, the opt-in changed to an opt-out. As a person with extreme EMF sensitivity and a medical implant, I sent a detailed letter from my doctor. Little from E-Web about smart meters from 2018 to 2024, when notice started going out that opt-out now meant a type of smart meter, and if refused, utilities would be terminated. Springfield wanted smart meters, and EPAD offers customer choice about analog meters. As do most utilities. Utilities in California, Arizona, Texas, and Maine are even replacing existing smart meters with analog meters, if that is the preference. There are videos that are wished to be shown to the board on your screen by a point and a please. They're about 11 minutes each. The first was recently posted in RFK Junior's children's defense site. Its electrical engineer, Bill Bathgate, testifying at the Michigan Legislature how smart meters, even in opt-out, cause transient dirty electricity throughout the wiring, and how this extra frequency increases the bill. The second video was filmed by Opt-Out Austin. It's of a doctor measuring RF radiation and dirty electricity in various areas of a home after the smart meter is replaced with an analog. There is indication about increased signaling being done at night, and increases to the bill with a smart meter. The analog meter is made of glass and metal, it lasts 60-plus years, and it can be refurbished. It doesn't have RF health issues, safety, and power surge issues. Doesn't cause transient dirty electricity, isn't part of a centralized grid with issues of cybersecurity. Doesn't collect data with Fourth Amendment issues. The plastic smart meter lasts five to seven years and has these issues, potentially causing serious consequences where none existed before. Families for Safe Meters with a history of 13 years sponsor top experts in smart meter concerns. Josh's show producer, Take Back Your Power, Daphne Tacover, Katie Singer, Dr. Martin Paul, Dr. Paul Haru. Recording of the Eugene events were sent to the E-Web board and are part of your record. We spoke countless times here at the public meetings. The research about transient dirty electricity, its effects, and increases to the bill have long been part of your record. Kiplinger article, 2024, there are plenty of households actively choosing to remain on analog meters, just like people here in Eugene. And I also had men in, two men in a Eugene E-Web truck and a large security truck show up at my home. My neighbors all saw it, too. We've always treated everyone with respect, and we'd like to be treated with respect, too. Thank you.
This is Joshua Corn, followed by... Call me stubborn. I think it's my right, I know it's my right, when it comes to health, to be stubborn about issues like this. And I won't accept the intimidation and extortionary practices that E-Web is executing in the smart meter campaign. I am preparing to go off the grid, and I would appreciate some discussions, a real discussion with personnel on how I can continue to have an account with the water and sewage department. But I will not accept a smart meter on my home. It's not healthy, and I just, I'm drawing that line. And I think, obviously, there's a lot of backlash against your program here. And it seems, aside from my issue and my plans, and to be fair, I'm not prepared to go off the grid like tomorrow. So this is rather stressful situation for me as well. But, you know, considering all that's going on with all these lawsuits against, and potential lack of insurance coverage based on the holiday fire damage, it just seems kind of ridiculous that E-Web is putting itself in this situation where all this intimidation is going on against us as loyal customers that have been with you for, you know, some of us, 20, 30 years. And for what? Just so you can threaten to turn off their power? And then if you actually do, then what? You're just going to get bombarded with lawsuits for it? So what's the point? I mean, is this the coup that allows us to actually regain the power of to take over this public utility like we should? And instead of having you guys bicker back and forth about how you're going to spend all our millions and millions of dollars and just ignore us repeatedly when we come to these meetings? Is that what this is about? Is that, because, you know, I'm up for it if that's the game, you know? And I don't think I'm alone, you know? It's like, we've got attorneys, so...
Thank you, Joshua.
Hi, I'm Hannah Shepherd, otherwise known as Zico Chick. It's nice to see you, people. I'd like to just give a brief thank you for your support and funding for the education program in 4J. And I'd like to invite you to the EV Challenge, just coming back for the first time public. And so that will be actually on Thursday, June 6th, on a school day, so it's more equitable, and the news can actually come. So we'll be busing kids over to the Lane Events Center at the auditorium and offering the speed car race, as well as the art and science concept. And so you're all invited, and we always hope that you show up. And, yeah, I've just been out in schools a lot for Earth Month, and in particular promoting water, drinking water awareness week. And yeah, I've just been out in schools a lot for Earth Month and in particular promoting water, drinking water awareness week. And we've been, we did a COVID project where we weren't able to get out in schools as much. So we installed water fill stations in a lot of the buildings with educational signage. And we've purchased additional signage because the schools really wanted it. All of the, all of the drinking mountains that have the fill stations. So that's turning out really beautifully. And it is when we're out talking about water in the classrooms, kids are really understanding more where their water comes from with the educational signage. So thank you for that. And yeah, and it's really nice too because it continues the relationship from the salmon season. So we're working a lot with a lot of the same people this fall. And so it's really nice and easy to roll into those classrooms because they already know us and we can just get right down to business. So been spending a lot of time bringing the A into STEM and doing some art projects with kids around water's life this month. So, so that's kind of where we're at and we're gearing up for next year's salmon season and, and all the other good things that we're in. Our generous funding, so thank you very much. And I'm under time for a change, so I'm gonna break protocol and I'm, I'm approaching.
Thanks, Dana. And with that, we'll end the public input period for this meeting. And I just want to remind folks that by policy, we don't be doing back and forth. For an extended conversation, but at this time commissioners are given the opportunity to comment if they say yes. Anywhere's cared to make comments? Nanny? Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, when, when we know what's the time start, the Lane Events Center, the June sixth, we get that. What to come? Yeah, for the EV Challenge.
Okay.
When it starts to get word of that, if we could get a calendar invite, that'd be great.
That worked? Great, thank you. I just want to say thank you all for providing testimony today. Thank you, Tina, for your continued work and bringing us updates on a regular basis. Who else? All right, moving on to the next topic. My agenda. The next topic for us is Consent Calendar A. Move up consent calendar, right? Motion to adopt consent calendar A from Commissioner Brown. Second? Second. No Carlson? All support? You can't say that? I passage unanimously. All right, moving on to consent calendar B. Do you adopt consent calendar B? Motion for adoption by Commissioner Brown, is there a second? Second by. Aye? Aye, passage unanimously. Next item is an update to customer fees, rates and charges.
Evening commissioners, for the record, I am Deborah Hart, the San Polen Assistant General Manager. With me here this evening is Adam Room, our rates manager. We're here this evening with a spring fees update. So historically, the fees that we're discussing here tonight have been handled dispersed across the utility and have come as an, on an as-needed basis. And so what we're, what we're doing here now is, is collecting our fee review for a spring update to this annually. Finance will take the lead on coordinating that effort. But the same folks who are experts in all of these areas who have been bringing you this information in prior years are still the ones doing the work. Some of them are on the planet in this room for detailed questions. This is similar to what we've been doing with rates over the years. So what I hope is it will be a more transparent process and that if it's rates, tariffs, that that will come to you in the fall and then in the spring we'll bring fees. With that, I'm gonna let Adam talk about the fees themselves.
Thanks. Deborah, so this is one thing you can kind of collaborate for working with different parts of the organization. These, these for consideration. There's several different buckets or different categories of fees that we review. Those are usually will be here in previous. There is being associated with assets that we own that access capacity or utilized for other end by other entities. And that's like the pole attachment fees, transmission fees. We have infrastructure in the ground and, and people are either attaching to our infrastructure or utilizing. Another category of fees is water service installation fees. So new customers pay a fee to connect to our system. And a third category of fees are standard fees that our typical customers would pay, but they don't pay every month. So something like connect disconnect fees, late fees. And those are kind of another category of the fees. The third category of fees are closely tied to some of the other installation and EES process changes that we'll be evaluating in the near future. So the projects get completed, we'll be looking at the new processes and new infrastructure. So we held up on bringing an update to those fees to go with that. The processes in place for. Feers and the EES. So with that, we'll go through these in a bit more detail. So the joint use pole attachment fees are fees for communication entities that attach to our distribution system. This are ultimately regulated by the FCC, but each state can establish its own rules and kind of create its own processes. Using the FCC's rule for the leads in Oregon are regulated by the Public Utility Committee and we follow those that establish our rates or the fees that we charge to those entities. There's a relatively significant increase this year and the basis for that was the rules established by the PUC said forty foot pole height is kind of the standard. We had been using a forty-five foot pole height, so we talked last year and ultimately this year, made that adjustment to more closely conform to the, or to conform to the we'll set forth by the PUC, but that resulted in a rating being brought forward this. There's roughly fifteen entities and represents three hundred thousand dollars in revenue for electric utility. Transmission fees are another fee that was updated this, been reviewed or were last updated or reviewed in twenty fifteen. There was a policy change in twenty eighteen that was brought to the board. So it's been reviewed over time, but the rates haven't been updated for a while. Those were updated this year and as it's shown here, it's just three entities. So I think that's part of the reason it hasn't been updated. It's been affecting a few customers, but I think it's going through this process of reviewing all the, the fees in place. Water installations charges are another one that hasn't been reviewed in a period of time. It was last updated in two thousand and thirteen. In two thousand and seventeen, some of the fees that appear on this were reviewed and had been previously charged on, in the time of materials basis. Twenty seventeen, they were used at average, the average cost of installations was used to develop more standard fees. So that streamlined the process and provided some transparency for the developers that were connecting to our system. So we had posted fees that they could review and look at ahead of the project. Or having, before the process was, they would apply and then they would go back and forth with them before they knew what the fee was. So that was a standardization that occurred. So these haven't, had last been updated in two thousand and thirteen, except for the ones that were. The dark fiber leasing fees is one that we have reviewed and brought to the board every year. Every other year, we prepare a cost of service analysis, so a more detailed analysis of our fiber lease. This is the intervening year where we just apply CPI to customers. Increases at CPI and then it's. Traffic signals. Fee that hasn't been updated since two thousand and sixteen, so this is another relatively low, low impact in terms of revenue for the electric utility angle revenue. Associated with this one is about thirty-five thousand dollars. These the city plays the paste it for electricity for traffic signals. So with that, we're bringing this consolidated fee, that process that Deborah outlined. This month, next month, we'll be coming back and incorporating any feedback from the board. Creating a recommendation for a group. I also just wanted to highlight these, these all appear in the general budget cost of service process at the end of the year as other revenue that offsets the revenue. So keeping these updated frequently as possible to the extent that they're material to the overall financial outlet for both utilities as an offset.
Thanks, Deborah. Start with Carlson Brown and then over to Schlossberg.
There was a few items in there where it talks about enforcement. Curious about our general enforcement for non-compliance and we actually going after and using this as a mechanism because it seems like we have a lot of non-compliance with some of these that are attaching to our poles.
Just one clarification, Commissioner, non-compliance in the sense of this definition is defined by the PUC. We don't have any non-compliant customers. It has to do with how they apply to the PUC to become a compliant entity.
Not that they're not following through with what it's like, you're not in this class. So you meet some different category to be attaching to the pole for some.
Right, it has to do with how they are classified by the PUC not. And we don't have any non-compliant customers that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right, okay. So that rate is kind of a non-rate for us really. Okay, and then on the school districts, do you know the one, the school district one?
The dark five.
That one. Yeah, what is this per, is it like per foot?
Per strand mile, so within the cable, there's this best strand. So they're leasing on strand mile, we are on a strand mile basis.
Roughly how many strand miles is this? Like, is this dollars, is this thousands of dollars? What's the scale of the full impact? Because this, I mean, what that is really.
For each individual customer, so the total revenue is, is that just under a billion dollars? I'm, I don't have a breakdown for each of the, how much impact.
Yeah, it's just hard to say like, okay, this is eighteen cents. That a lot, but I don't, I don't know what that kind of equates to roughly. That's why I'm just trying to get a sense of what the difference would be. I understand that's roughly that in, in annual level of revenue from thirty-one customers, so.
Yeah, oh, and this increase, since it was just a CPI increase, it was three point two percent was the CPI number applied to that, so that's the change relative to the last year.
Okay, so the total increase. This, this is the revenue and so the total increase is like three percent more than what that is.
Yeah, yeah, so the nine hundred and sixty was like last year's revenue. Three point two percent will be added.
You know, thirteen cents just seems like essentially basically it's just hard for me. Oh, kind of like what kind of impact that this is in. Teacher's worth or is it like fifty bucks?
Before we come back next month, maybe we could provide commissioners with a couple of examples. There was some history to how these rates vary as to which funds we were recovering. The school district, for example, goes way back to what was called the Light the Apple Program. It was basically only trying to capture the ongoing maintenance. So that's why you see some of the differences here, but it's gonna be a pretty small difference, but we'll give you some examples.
Great, thanks, Commissioner Brown. Several questions, macro and maybe micro. Why did we wait eleven years to do this?
And I think. So I answered that question for Commissioner Schlossberg. It was an oversight and we should not do that. And part of this effort here is to bring all of our fee updates together and have departments, so finance is now taking the responsibility for collecting the information and pulling together a fee update every year. Should have done it earlier.
So, you know, there's this big push statewide, local and everything for affordability of housing and it's called the death by a thousand cuts. And you're doubling some of these fees, fees and all of that. And this is, you know, and cities mandating new more factors and stormwater prepared, but everything else. And we're going in the wrong direction. And last time I checked, I thought we were, you know, if this isn't a financial thing or is this an equitable thing? Because we got funded by. And I'm wondering how we can maybe rethink this a little bit on affordability? Because how many costs are going off the charts and we're just exacerbating it? I mean, some of these fees are doubling. And, you know, it looked good on paper, but you know, if I were developers, you know, per system connection with no hard service, you know, sixty-five hundred to ten thousand and looking at your cost hook up to houses, you know, just one, one water connection doubling. But I just hope that we could take another look at this and not use it. So, you know, if we would have done this gradually, that's great. But the timing of this with, you know, mortgage rates where they are and availability, I mean, it's just not easy for me to accept. So that's just my one comment. The, the other thing on the multiple use on, on our, on the pole, give me an example, who another user would be?
For the pole?
Yeah. Comcast?
Yeah, it's communication.
Okay, communication, everything else. Because they're jacking the fees like you wouldn't believe it. The cost of an assembled corridor is monumental. And we're already paying the city one point four, one point six million a month to use their byways. When we buy and maintain, but that's, that's a bit of building being swallowed. Why aren't we raising it more? Because Comcast, Quest and all those other people just tell us when to put our hands down. And they're, they're not gonna use our corridors that we've assembled, we maintain, we do the tree trimming. And that's just a, you know, a portability, I would think that we would raise them a whole lot more. Why not?
Well, this is a very specific calculation for the, the rate specifically for the pole attachments, just because the Oregon wanted to avoid being subject to FCC rules for, since this is kind of a communications realm. The order of the state of Oregon established rules, so we're conforming to those rules. So there's just real specific language on how you calculate O and M expense, administrative expense and differentiation. And so this is following that. The one thing that was a change from last year was the realization that instead of, we have been using the assumption of forty-five feet as kind of an average pole length. There's language in the PUC rules that points to a forty-foot hole length. So instead of calculating how big all your poles are, we just defer to that PUC rule, which is forty feet. So that's kind of the standard. So that did result in, I mean, it's roughly thirty, thirty, thirty-five percent increase in the rates.
I fall back to my point during the storm when nobody else is maintaining right of ways. Some of their lack of maintenance is drawing down our facilities. And yet we are recovering the cost of that. You know, to me, it doesn't make sense. They're not, they're not trimming the right ways, we're supposed to, they're not doing it, but they're using our pole, our facilities. Why don't we, why don't we get a little tougher with them? Frank?
Yeah, just way in, when it comes to the pole attachment rate, we have no leeway. This, this calculation is driven by the state and it's. This, this calculation is driven by the state and it's, it is. Preordained that this is how utilities.
PUC thing?
Yeah. How the calculation is done. There's other methods to potentially look at cost recovery. From, from issues like that, and I know. There have been some legislative, potential legislative remedies to look at that, but that's, that would be a separate process. This is, this is a sort of a preordained approach that the PUC drives.
My question was about was why it took so long to. These changes, which I know you addressed in the. Free meeting questions, and so it sounds like that won't be an issue anymore because once a year.
Either propose an update or acknowledge why an update is not needed.
Yeah, so we've got a few comments, one, I've been thinking back on what. Couple of things the Commissioner Brown brought up, and, and looking at the A I S that we got. It looks like there is a remedy for, for vegetation from these people. It goes to the said vegetation around communications lines, let's not pose foreseeable damage to the pole. And electricity's supply operators facility and the respective permit. He has the obligation in its contact to maintain clearance as shown in the contract below, and that's an O R S stat.
Statute.
So if we've got an O R S statute that says we can do it, we should look into how we can do that, whether that is telling our. Tree trimmers to trim down above the telephone wires. And charge the, charge the communication fees for it, but we've got a statute that says we can do it. And I think we should look into how we can enforce that statute.
Just, just quick follow up, Commissioner, we, we will look at the enforcement piece of that, that having a statute, a statute. Statute is someone else, a statute is one thing, having the mechanism to enforce it, we'll, we'll have some discussions around that. Because I think that's what some of the legislative discussions have been about as well.
And then I'm telling you again, the, the increase of the hookups for the water lines. I hear it, and then again, in, in meetings, well. The commissions that I'm on, how onerous the E web. Fees are, especially on scale. We've got, when somebody's trying to put a smaller home in with some of these ones that are done with. The new legislations on House Bill two thousand one, where they're putting a small thing on a lot, ten thousand dollars on a. Two hundred thousand dollar. A U is a lot more than if you're putting in a five hundred thousand. Dollar house on a quarter of acre lot, so scalability is something that I would hope we could look at in the future. As, as far as this, and again, as far as the. Big jump. We used rate stabilization in the past as a way to gradualize things, I don't know if that's something that we can do in this instance. Where our community is sitting with its housing. Prices. And adding more fees that make it more difficult for developers and individuals to create housing in our community. Something that I would like to see, anything that we can do to make that more affordable and. Easier in the short term, in some more housing units built, I would hope we can look at possibilities, ways of doing that. That's a lot of money, you know, to put in. Just the E web, E web things, then there's the cities S T Cs, and then there's the. It's transportation parks, all these other ones, and then we have S T Cs as well, so. Housing costs are going up and up and like. Commissioner Brown said, it's just these little things over and over again, so anything we can do as a utility to. Foster or. Ease to construction would be something that I would look forward.
I did just want to acknowledge that S T Cs were not a part of this fee update, we weren't able to finish that where. Utility is working with a consultant, affordability is a part of that methodology. So I know that doesn't address all of your concerns, but I did want to call that out, and also. We missed acknowledging there are more fees coming this year. Those do have a focus on affordability. Frank?
I just wanted to confirm that these fees are cost based. Yeah, so one of the things that I just want to remind us is that. We have a cost base fee and we don't charge the cost. It's basically supplemented by the rest of our customers, it's socialized across the customer base, so. And that's part of the discussion August, when we talk about rate design. Opportunities to do that, but we, it's not like we are creating a fee that's arbitrary. This is a cost base fee that, that we're, so just, this is a reminder.
Yeah, I have a question about this, will we be discussing the water, the hookup fee and then the regular rate for water as a part of our rate sign discussion? Or is it mostly likely?
Oh, it will initially, President McCray. It will start even more generic than that, it will be do what areas, for example. And when might the board want to socialize certain costs or other costs? And that would be water, it would be electric, fees could be included in that as well as rates based on consumption, so. For example, there's, I, I think one of the things we need to think about is, are the rates going to be cost based? Or are they going to be designed to drive consumer behavior? That's, that's a very different approach. To pricing, we, we have a statutory obligation to be cost based at large. But it doesn't mean that every single fee is cost based, and under what conditions might, might the board want to. Socialize certain costs or have the beneficiary pay for certain costs directly, so those, those will be part of that decision.
Do you have any proposals you want to put on the table in terms of changes to this? Because we're not going to hear, we'll hear back from you next month, right, with something to.
So how we handle that is really up to you all, direction here that we can incorporate. I, I do have the note on the details on dark fiber, and I think we're probably going to be really straightforward. Not even in. Advance, but we could bring it back on consent, we could bring it back for more conversation.
I mean, so, so for me, I guess the question would be would be. What would be the process that, obviously, we've been, we've been socializing this for ten years. Right, and then to automatically jump it. For me. I would have to look at the rest of my commissioners, but would there be an interest in, in doing this as a phased approach, socializing it over. Next couple of years. And I, I was throwing that out because I don't know what the, the proper mechanism to do that is, I'm just concerned about the high jump and.
So the reason that these jumps are so big is because. Nearly all along. Like this. And so to make, I would be. That. Just a little. Error, so I would. Putting it in, so at least.
Yeah, I, I totally understand, I, I think if you look at our rate making principles, gradualism was one of those, now it doesn't necessarily apply to fees directly, but in this case. Like, and, and I understand the, the fact that this was. This was on, on us that we didn't, we didn't do that. I might point out that being on us is that they, somebody benefited for ten years out of that process as well, so. I, I think we then, we'll get a number of different, we can bring some gradualism options in this case where we have a large jump and. Some proposals that the board is interested in looking.
And so three nods for that, is it just the water, this water connection fee that we're, that's the one that jumps up the most in my opinion?
I mean, the other ones, example, the, the fiber one, you know, we've been doing, we've been paid with that, and it's a C P I one. And, and I think that that, those types of rates. It's a C P I plus more because of inflation, you know, our costs and water infrastructure, but. Those are the ones that I feel comfortable going to my constituents and saying, this is why it's going up. Because oops, we forgot to do it for the last ten years. But hey, I think we've done our best to keep rates low and costs low, but this is a perfect storm, but COVID, interest rates, no supply of land and deformity. Our is something that's an anomaly. You didn't have five, ten years ago, we have now, and so I think it's not as much on us as it is on. Iron, and we can turn around and say, we'll do the best we can to make. Our farm, ability to become, not going to make any more land, and they're going to have to figure out how they're going to make that. You think that, I almost started thinking it's from a old task ahead of them, but, but for us to be able to go from, you know, twenty seven hundred to four thousand five hundred. I mean, sixty five hundred and fifteen thousand, I mean, you know, a small, that's a lot of money. So that's the cost, so I'm, I'm for granted.
So, yeah, it sounds like proposals to come back with gradual or incremental changes on the water, that water connection fee specifically. I appreciate Deborah, you're just acknowledging, you know, we missed this, that's super helpful to me and brings me confidence that. You have it both, and do you wonder if there are any of these fees for which just applying a C P I annually would make sense? Just to reduce the overall. The staff, I don't, I don't know if that makes it easier, it seemed like it would to me, but I'm interested in. What else there?
It'd be a, it could be a potential outcome as we look at the totality of the fees. There are a few more that will be incorporated next year, so the list does get longer, most of those are around customer. So that could be something that we bring back as a.
President McCray, I mean, there's, there's a number of different options, I think, more than we have on staff. We do some other areas, we do more of a specific analysis of cost every other year, every third year, and then in between, we might apply. Some inflationary factor, we'll, we'll have to figure out from staff what, what the impact is definitely.
Anything else from us?
So we'll be back in front of you next month and we'll have. At least an option that would have gradualism. On the water connection, on the water service installation and more information on the dark fiber.
Just one final comment related to a, a comment to Commissioner Brown, we are not rolling in money, I think is what you said. I haven't given you my report yet, which we'll, we'll talk about later, so.
I'm going to get to that before you do.
Everyone's going to talk about that.
At the meetings.
Just starting.
So this is my assigned seat for the next twenty minutes. You're in, Rob. Thank you, Ellen.
Yeah, moving to the next topic of annual reserve fund status and transfer use of reserves.
It's the last fair fee you get.
All right, still Deborah Hart, we've done a little swap out and Aaron Palmer, the acting finance manager. And Rob Freitag, the general accounting supervisor are here with me this evening. To talk about our year end reserves, some recommended transfers, a little update on where we're at today. And some. Targets, reserve targets.
Thank you. Kind of got into our agenda short for this agenda item, but yeah, we're going to talk about reserve transfers and targets. And then talk about some other considerations that we've got for you that are noteworthy this evening. And then look for creating some space where you can give us some direction. So real quick on the overview here, overall cash balances as of the end of last year were above target. There were two individual reserves, both the water and electric capital improvement reserves that were below target. And item of note, we like to say for compliance reasons, if you will, that, that service coverage requirements were met for both utilities last year. And again, we will talk about continuing developments for two thousand and twenty four, I feel like I'm a movie trailer now for what's coming. With that, I'm going to pass it off to Rob Freitag, our general accounting and treasury supervisor.
Thanks, Aaron, good evening commissioners. This slide shows the water utility's reserve balances at the end of two thousand and twenty three. We'll go into a little more detail on the recommended use of cash and recommended target increases. The water utility finished two thousand and twenty three with notable progress on significant capital projects. Spending to support capital efforts exceeded budget projections from earlier in the fall. And the primary recommended transfer to the water utility is to reposition the reserves to support budgeted funding designations. Report financial policy, in years where there is a difference between the per order contribution rate and the amount provided for in the annual budget. The excess amount will be set aside in a board reserve for reduction of unfunded retirement liabilities in the future. First costs during two thousand and twenty three were lower than budgeted by one hundred and forty thousand. The rate stabilization fund is intended to enhance the utility's agility during financial challenges and minimize or smooth rate impacts to customers. Management has anticipated use of surplus rate stabilization funds to support capital projects with the two thousand and twenty four adopted budget. Including a drop seven point three million to support capital investments. Accordingly, management seeks to implement this funding strategy and recommends this transfer. Financial policy benchmarks the capital improvement reserve target to annual depreciation expense. Two thousand and twenty three depreciation expense was eight point seven million and management recommends increasing the target to nine million. Shifting to the electric utility, this slide shows the electric utility's reserve balances at the end of two thousand and twenty three. Again, we will go into a little more detail on the recommended use of cash and recommended target increases. Funding sources identified in the two thousand and twenty three electric utility budget included bond proceeds that would have required a bond issuance in two thousand and twenty three. Due to positive operating performance in two thousand and twenty two. Remaining proceeds from the prior bond issuance and a favorable interest rate forecast, the electric utility deferred the bond issuance to this year. The two thousand and twenty three budget also assumed use of rate stabilization funds for capital. With further evaluation, it was determined the transfer was not necessary for two thousand and twenty three. These factors contributed to the capital improvement reserve any of the year below target. The current bond issuance process will reimburse the capital improvement reserve following closing next month. And the primary transfer recommendation for the electric utility is intended to reposition the reserves to support capital investments in the two thousand and twenty four budget. And level set with financial plans from last fall. In determining the sufficiency of the power reserve, risks from prices, loads, resources and credit exposure are considered. Wholesale power prices have remained relatively high and volatile and have increased the value of generation within the utility's portfolio. Accordingly, this dynamic has increased the potential loss of value the utility could experience in the event of lower generation. Increasing the reserve will help guard against potential negative price movement that could occur as the market experiences greater volatility. As mentioned previously, for the water utility, in years where there is the difference between the per order contribution. the per se order contribution rate and the amount provided for in the annual budget, board financial policy directs that the excess amount will be set aside in a board reserve for a reduction of unfunded retirement liabilities in the future. First costs during 2023 were lower than budget by one hundred and nine thousand. Funds above target in the electric rate stabilization fund have been modeled as a funding source for capital projects in the long term financial plan and will help reduce future borrowing. Funds may be used for one time expenses and emergency items to be allocated based on the board's direction. Management has anticipated use of surplus rate stabilization funds to support capital investment plans. The 2024 adopted budget included a drop of nine point three million for rate stabilization funds for capital funding, and management seeks to implement this funding strategy by recommending this transfer. The working cash target is based on the amount of cash needed to pay for ongoing operational expenditures and maintain an amount of working capital to support the day's cash ratio sufficient to maintain higher than average pre-creating. Management evaluates the working cash target annually and is recommending this increase to forty-five billion to support the greater than one hundred and fifty days cash metric. As mentioned in the previous slide for the power reserve, increasing the target to twenty-five million will help guard against potential negative price movement that could occur as the market experiences greater volatility. As noted previously for the water utility, per financial policy, the capital improvement reserve target is benchmarked to annual depreciation expense. Management recommends increasing the target to twenty-six million to account for a meter replacement reserve and rising depreciation expense. With that, I'll turn the presentation back over to Aaron.
You, Rob. So yes, there have been some prior years where much has gone according to plan, if you will, and we brought this topic forward as a correspondence and consent item. Uh, this year does bring again some additional noteworthy topics for consideration this evening. Uh, first one on this slide is the first quarter 2024 financial performance. So the recommended transfers based on performance from the end of last year would place our first quarter 2024 working cash about twelve million dollars below target. Working cash positions took a big hit in Q1 following restoration efforts in the January ice storm coupled with below budgeted generation and retail loan. Management recommends that we continue to monitor and manage costs to budget in 2024, and we are also evaluating timing of actions that can move these metrics back to uh their targets. Um, one item in particular there, FEMA, Public Assistance Grant Funding, has been freed up, if you will, with a presidential disaster declaration for the January ice storm, and we are actively pursuing that. Another item of note uh with respect to reserves, uh the 2024 adopted budget factored in board direction to pre-fund the Lieberg project decommissioning. That included a net deposit of about four point two million dollars through the Lieberg Reserve. And so we plan to use established procedures similar to how we do rate funded capital, revenues are transferred on a monthly basis and expenses draw from the reserve as they're incurred. This will allow for consistent disciplined, uh a consistent disciplined approach uh to the pre-funding and the ongoing ability to assess the pace of decommissioning in relation to the funding. So uh with that as the approach on there, there's no reserve transfer needed for the 2023 discussion that we're seeking to have this evening. Uh, for both of these items, uh we plan to uh further evaluate them as this year plays out and bring it back in similar timing next year. So next steps, um we are looking for board direction on the recommended transfers and targets in relation to the 2023 performance, and uh we would look to bring this back as a resolution next month, potentially on consent calendar, but with that, uh pass it back to you, President McCray.
Thanks, comments, Brown? Well, thank you for your presentation and cut to the chase, I support your recommendation. You have two questions. What's the approximate total amount we sit within reserves that we have? Um, seventy million? Eighty million?
Get the right number.
Yeah, one hundred and thirty-one, thirty.
On electric.
On electric, thirty-five.
And so what what kind of an interest do we get on that?
The investment portfolio at this point, I think, is uh somewhere between four and five, maybe a little bit closer to four, it's inching up.
And that money goes into each respective account for that, because that's a significant amount of money.
It's it's going into, in terms of the allocation on a month to month basis, there are restricted funds that are not shown here, legal restrictions tied to those. Uh, the the to which that is a part of the portfolio, there's interest allocated to those. Otherwise, for all the designated funds, the interest is going into working cash.
And and then secondly, um, second source, we used to have, you know, the separate fund like we have for Lieberg, and I don't see that anymore. Is that refunding? Had we raised rates considerably to pre-fund that and we stopped it, we gave a refund?
The alternate water supply fund, I think, is the remnant of of the second source, I think.
That's the three, eight, six, five, that's the money that we still have left over when we raised the rates, and so that's that's uh not going to be added into with any of this.
Right, and that's been uh planned as a funding source for efforts on the second source.
Three, six, but we're not gonna pre-fund. So the rate impacts, I mean, the water rates are gonna go absolutely, and I was wondering if we have some of these reserves in water, why we're not allocating to that fund? Because we were, you know, uh, if you look at our rate projection for water, it's pretty significant, and uh just wondering why why we weren't pre-funding that like we're pre-funding Lieberg.
Then several years uh since we rolled back the three percent that originally went there, we do have more flexibility when we keep funds in either rate stabilization, which is one place that you all have tucked away reserves or even in our capital improvement reserve or working cash.
That we can take out of those to pre-fund. And we just want to make sure we kept that on the radar, because I don't like what we see in the future for rates.
That?
Thank you very much. Yeah, um. I'm in favor of the, all the all the transfers that you have. My one question and one thing that I would propose, and I'm gonna put it as a proposal to my fellow commissioners is um regards to rate stabilization funds. When you go to the, can you go to the target slide? So in our policies, we have tar- targets for each one of these funds. Um, and we're asking to do the working capital go up, asking for the others to go up to what is the reasonable target for these? For me, I think that we should also look at the rate stabilization fund as a, to increase those, we have quite a bit of money in both of them right now. We obviously, we do have plans for those, but if we have set the target, so the water target is a billion dollars and the uh the electric target is five million dollars, those are the funds that we as a board really have the most fungible. Those are the ones that we can really affect and say, hey, you know, let's use some of rate stabilization to gradualize, we've done it in the past. The other ones, we're all putting up higher, but we're not looking at the at rate stabilization funds, which has been have been the same since I've been on the board, and I don't know when they went up the last time. Um, right now, the the water uh rate stabilization fund has almost eight million dollars in it with a target of one million, and the uh electric has a rate stabilization target of five million, even with a nine million dollar draw, it still has seventeen million dollars in that. I just think that all these other funds are going up and our ability to use our board policies is is not going up accordingly, so I would I would think that it would be appropriate to raise the rate stabilization fund by a billion dollars and the and the water one going to Commissioner Brown's, maybe to one point five million dollars. Uh, uh, suggestion that I would have, and I would love to hear uh uh from staff that that's an appropriate policy change.
So annually, when we do look at reserves, we do evaluate whether or not the reserves are set to meet uh the purpose for which they were established, and when we established the rate stabilization uh accounts, they were designed to approximate roughly a three percent rate increase, and a look this year indicated that they're still very close to that number. We have modeled, as we put money in, uh, the commitment that we made to the board when we did that was that we that we were looking to use that to reduce future rate impacts. So in the rate trajectories that um you looked at in the fall, that did assume that we were already using those funds to smooth rate impacts to our customers, and that's how we would again show it to you in the in the summer.
Yeah, so Commissioner Borowski, I think what I'm hearing is, and I and I think we recognize this as as staff as well, the volatility of the world that we're operating in is is increasing. There's uh an incredible amount of risk associated um with with all kinds of markets, with costs associated with what we do, which tends to be heavy raw materials based um on on both water and electric. And things that can just impact our financial resiliency, and we, I think we've we've already recognized that that we need to be taking a look in the, a look at all of these relative to that operating environment. What I'm hearing you say is we need to include the rate stabilization fund as part of that review. The challenge isn't going to be moving money around, it's going to be creating that pool to begin with. You know, and the only way that's done is if revenue comes in greater than expenses, which generally for us means rates. So that's that's the trade off and the challenge that we have as an organization, especially after the first, you know, issues like happened in the first quarter, um is not just saying, oh, here's the funds and here's how it can move things around, it's creating the the actual beans that go in in these bonds. So there's there's gonna be some trade offs there that we're gonna have to discuss with the board around the budgeting process and around the long term financial plan.
And 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 I guess it's just my hope that restabilization fund gives us the ability to react to some of those those things that get thrown at us and 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 not have to have to, you know, that's the place, and it's a target, it's not, it's not saying that it can't go below it, it's that's, it it would just say, it would flag us if if it goes below six million dollars, you would get a a flag and then you would explain why.
And and so if I just might add too, that the decisions that you all have made around our uh working cash targets, our power reserve targets, um do give us some of what you're talking about, we didn't. Frank's gonna talk more about what a hard first quarter we had, and because of those decisions, we're able to absorb without immediate reaction back to the back to the community. Um, so some of that work is already built in, and I need to write down my train of thought because I have one more thing I was gonna say and it fell out of my head.
I I think what we're saying is we agree with you uh that creating financial flexibility is important. Creating financial flexibility isn't, it it has to be achieved. You you uh you can, you can set targets, you can have the ability to do that, you have to be able to create the the revenue versus the cost to be able to fund it, and so that's and but you're absolutely right, I think we we agree that there's volatility going forward, probably greater than what we're seeing in the past, and having a fund like rate stabilization, which is very flexible, is something that um that would be a useful tool.
And I did, I I also want to clarify that um financial policies do tell us what we need to do when we call below target, and they do give us a timeframe to which we um we call them target, but they do have to either be there or we have somewhere between six months and three years, depending on on how far they've fallen from target.
I have a quick question, because I'm not sure if I'm reading this right, but the rate stabilization fund, our target, this is for the electric utility, is five million dollars, and after we use nine point three million dollars, we'll still have seventeen million dollars in that rate stabilization fund. So we're well above target, and I think what you're asking is this, we formally step up that target, even though we're already being well above that target, right? I just want to make sure.
I I I just want to make sure that your commissioners are clear.
Thanks.
Those were the balances at the end of the year.
Yeah.
You can then take off twelve million because of the first quarter.
Yeah.
So on the electric side, just just so that everybody's clear.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. I guess my point be that it's clear that we're we're maintaining even more headroom through this stabilization fund than our current target is seeking, and that's turning out to be really necessary, but I just was trying to make sure I understood that we're asking to formally bump that up, even though that buffer had been a little bit bigger.
So um rate stabilization funds have a sort of an interesting little, when we can put them in when we have good years, uh and then uh they have the ability to be withdrawn and used as debt service coverage in other years, so they've been a very good place for us to put money that you all have intended to use for future purposes. So it's actually very deliberate that we're over target today, but over the course of the next years, you see us coming down closer to target, and that's really that promise on the electric utility, those were actually started with funds that were dedicated from Carmen, now I'm going back in my memory, but they, but those funds were established to avoid borrowing, and we are gonna, we're modeling coming much closer to target over the course of the next 10 years in order to keep that service as low as possible, which then has a rate.
So I have a kind of a clarifying question on that, the types of reserves, so um please correct me if I'm wrong, but again, I just want to make sure that I understand. So the operating reserve, um the self insurance reserve, the power reserve, somewhat the capital improvement reserve, we typically have the target and we keep it at that target, although I see there's a variance here. The rate stabilization fund is kind of the catch all. Good, you can put the rest of it into that fund, right?
You have it doing that.
Okay, and then the other ones, we don't like, we don't distribute it kind of evenly across, and then there's a reason or reason two. Um, okay, and so the operating reserve uh versus the power reserve, give me an example of when we might dip into the operating reserve versus the power reserve.
We dipped into our working cash is where it was coming from. So the power reserve is designed for very specific.
For like electricity, we, the prices, load, the sorts of things that that um are volatile in the power market, and that's when we would use it. High spiking storm that caused us to go on purchase, which is kind of what we had in January, right? I mean, we had to go out and, well, we didn't, we didn't, that wasn't it. Like last July, when we had, we actually asked customers to curb, that could have been an incident where we could have dipped into the reserve if we really needed to because we had these high energy prices, because the entire region was really hot, so everybody was going out on the market to purchase.
And actually, because of some of the things that Frank's gonna talk about from um the ice storm, that would be another time that we might dip in, and that's why the recommendation, because we look and those factors continue to be very volatile.
That would be on the operating reserve, though, right, for the ice storm type of a situation versus the power reserve?
And Commissioner, it could be, you know, if you if you look at the impacts of the ice storm, if it was an operational impact, yes, it would go out of the opera, it could come out of the operating reserve. We did see issues where we lost wholesale opportunities, which have been an opportunity on the power reserve side, or we were hoping incredibly high prices across the Northwest because of of coldness across the, you know, supply and demand across the, so it could have, could have been a combination of of both. coldness across the, you know, supply and demand across the Midwest. So it could have, could have been a combination of, of both.
And, and the reason to have so many different types of reserves.
That's an interesting question and okay, maybe hey, if you can answer.
Okay. Yes. So a variety of designated funds. And I, I think what what has happened for the, the board over time is that this gives transparency into the risks we're trying to mitigate with the funds that we so calling it out and having the operating reserve, the power reserve and giving those a target is a way to really create a lot of transparency around the amount of money that we're holding and why we're holding it. Yeah. Again, why so many, why an operating, why a power? Ultimately, at the end of the day, they're all contributing to our cash position that's giving us that financial stability. But I, I, I think the, the reason that we have the variety is because we then apply these different risks that we want to mitigate.
So the risk, I'm, I'm, I'm only dialing into this because there were certain requests to up particular particular funds over others. And it feels to me like if there's, if there's a real methodology around how we get to that, we see that this risk operating reserve, power reserve, like power reserve is going to go up, 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 because we are going to see more of these storm events. And as we look at the trajectory of it, that cost, you know, trajectory looks like this. And that makes sense to me. Totally get it. However, if it's more arbitrary for me, it's not as big of a deal, but I'm supportive. So I just, I appreciate you digging in and helping me understand the specifics of the different accounts. I have one other quick question. You had talked about the, there was a decision to not issue the bonds. Because we, and I just wanted to understand the process of that, because my understanding is we kind of say, okay, go and issue bonds. And then that typically goes and happens. Was this a situation where we said, go and issue bonds? And then they changed, we didn't issue bonds? And then we don't have to vote on that again? Or is that different?
So we had some initial, initially in the long term financial plan, I think for this would have been 2022. We were modeling that we would go out and issue for the electric utility. There's kind of a go no go decision point before we were bringing materials to you as the board to request to pursue a bond issuance. And then we were seeing really strong cash year from 2022. We were seeing that we still had bond proceeds left from 2020. So we still had remaining funds to, to tackle capital projects there. And we were seeing that the interest rate environment at that time was saying rates are going to tick down for all the the Fed was, was indicating that rates were going to go. Even though we still had bond proceeds to use, there's also a it's called arbitrage, because we're an issue of tax exempt debt. There's another compliance layer to that, that brings some, I'll say, added administrative efforts and considerations if we're going to hold bond proceeds for an extended period of time. So yeah, variety of factors there. That's what's thinking, you don't need to go for it this year. There's, there's a time when you need to borrow and we didn't need to go for it then. We were also able to avoid about two and a half million over the interest expense by doing that. As of last, for last year, if you will. And so those are kind of the actors, if you will, that went into differing.
I understand the ideal behind the, we're getting at the process. So did we vote and say, yes, go issue them? And then? No. Okay. So there was just, there was not a go forth and then.
We only asked you all to authorize water bonds last year. After that analysis, we only asked for authorization to issue water bonds. And then in this last year planning, we would need them this year. And you authorized those earlier this year and then supplemental resolution tonight.
So if we went through and said, go then, and there was, you know, some change in thinking, something drastic happened. You all would come back and let us know. It wouldn't be just kind of like, all right, we're not going to do that now.
If we don't go into, we'll make sure that you hear about it and you know why. We're going into.
I was just going to answer very directly and say, yes, we, we, if, if you authorize it, we go for it. This was not a situation where you authorized to do something and we chose for whatever reason not to. We would come back to the board for redirection at that. We do every year, I think this one between 20 22 and 23, when we talked about the long term financial plan, we modeled it with and without at that discussion, which we usually haven't built on. So, and then updated in October, but that was the process is if you tell us, if we're coming back to you.
We don't need to.
Never is going to come back.
When I read that and heard that, I was, okay, okay.
I have just one quick question about the depreciation rate. Is there something in particular that's driving it? So the depreciation was a bit higher than we were anticipating? Is there something driving that? That there isn't just a bunch of things?
Value of our assets. So the more assets or the more valuable assets we have, the higher the depreciation on those assets.
Just that the value is up.
Also the age of the assets. If you have a newer asset base, you're depreciating more. And, and that's one that I think we'll talk about internally. Is we go based on annual depreciation, but depreciate, your depreciated cost is based on an installed cost. It's not a replacement cost. Is there some supplier there that we should consider in that reserve? Ultimately, a lot of this comes back to what are reading agencies looking for? What is financial resiliency that we think are, we're mitigating for real things? As we go forward, that's why we get lots of different artistic descriptions. But that's one that we want to look at as well.
Thanks. I support this and the transfers as proposed here and, and we could probably do it as a consent item. I also appreciate this board and previous boards and staff commitment to making sure that we have these reserves and buffers to enable us to deal with the curveballs that we're catching right now. I just feel like I'm continually impressed by the financial management of this utility. It's, it just feels really well considered and, and I appreciate that. You had proposed an incremental change in the rate stabilization fund. I know Frank said it's one thing to set the targets, another thing, we have to have the the funds to fill that. I'm curious if that creates the amounts that Commissioner Borowski just suggested, does that create angst or unintended consequences that we're not thinking about?
So if you're asking me about angst, I'm already feeling a little bit of angst over the increase of the targets that I do believe are necessary and our working cash position after the end of the first quarter. Any need for more rocks, so to speak, is going to put rate pressure. That's not the largest rate pressure that we may feel somewhere, but all, all of the increases do add up.
Thoughts about that? Still going to put it out there as a, as a request and see where the rest of the board comes. Policemaker, that's, this is the one area. I mean, I'm used to to having like a budget committee where we have spent hours going over budgets, not 15 minutes. But as a policymaker, that's a policy position that I, I feel strongly on. And I'll put it in front of the board. And if there's consensus, I'll, I'll go with it. And if not, that's fine.
I just got to get a clarifying. I know we're, we're over time. Right now, we're, we're talking about some, some targets and we do have further discussions coming up around long term financial plan and budget. Commissioner, would you be okay if we approached those two items looking at increases in reserve and the reserves and the increase impact on those first, before we put forth changing the, the target reserve?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. And it doesn't have to happen this, this year. I just see that that rate stabilization fund is the one fund that the, the commission has the most direct impact on. I'm not going to go in and, and say, I want to change the, the policy on the, the target for the power reserve. You're asking us to do that and I'm taking your, your stance on that. But I see us looking at rate stabilization just because of the, the way that it is titled, rate stabilization. And our ability to use that fund to do what the title says. And that stabilizing fund, whether that means graduating things like we used it for, for the water rates. When, when we were looking at high water rates, we talked to you and we said we didn't like that. So for me, that's why I want to make sure that that fund is, is indexed as well as the other funds are. That's the reason I'm putting that forward, because that's the one fund that I feel ourselves as policymakers have the most direct impact on. That's why I want to put it forward and I'm willing to wait.
I think we, we agree with you. We'd like to have that discussion. I guess what I'm proposing is have that discussion in the context of the long term financial plan and the budget process. If that's, if that's okay.
Yeah, as long as it's part of that presentation as far as changing policies, because change policy changes are different than long term financial plan. I'll pull it off the table.
Okay. Any other comments, questions on this topic? You all have what you need from us.
I believe we do. We will send this back on consent and we will bring back a conversation on the rate stabilization fund and some modeling about what that might look like with the long term financial plan. And we open the discussion.
All right, we'll take a 10 minute break.
Thank you.
Uh. 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 Uh.
Good evening, commissioners. Yes, we are, sir. Okay. Um. My name is Rodney Price, this is the general manager, want to talk a little bit about capital plan. And where it's at right now. Good news, this is information only, you will not have to think. Um, I don't think too much, but first I want to say two thank you. Uh, there was a time where I could probably create this presentation off the top of my head almost. That's no longer the case. I had probably about 16 pages of information that I was able to still fit for staff, I want to say thank you. You know who you are, you know the list. Um, but I also want to say thanks to the board. Uh, the board pays, plays a very important part in our capital process and in our capital plan, so. This presentation is more or less geared towards how I think maybe the board fits in a little bit, uh, maybe to help illustrate. Where you are in this process and actually where we're at in the yearly budget cycle. With the capital planning, so next, next month, uh, we'll come and talk to you about capital plan assumptions. There's a lot of store details, we go into reserves, this is a piece of that depreciation, age assistance, some of these kind of things, and then following. Uh, you know, Tyler and, and his teams, uh, they come up with the, the capital plans and we. We present those in detail and you can prove and go through them, so, and that all goes in the long-term financial plan. Um. But, uh, that's roughly 40% of our budget if you take out power sales or power purchase. Just a couple of reminders, uh, because I was going to focus on the, the type two and type three tonight. Those are the, the definitions, they're, uh, big projects is type two, over a million dollars, discrete projects, usually some multi-year kind of things. Think current substation, uh, usually rate funded, but can be bond funded to, uh, to a certain extent. Type three is your Carmen, uh, those are the bond funded projects, uh, second source, that kind of thing. Some of the, uh, uh. Pieces where the board plays in is in the strategic plan and there's, uh. As the strategic plan is refined and it whittles down, uh, the goals to the goals for the year. Um, those, they help drive what goes into the capital plan. We have things like the master plans and in water and electric, uh, in the, the water especially, that's a, a regulated. Document that tells the, the utility where to go. Uh, we're updating that this year, I believe, um, electric's developing a, a similar thing to their own. Uh. I need to see too much more there. Um. But the question is, you know, what, what, how do we know we have a successful capital plan? Um, and I think it depends where you sit in the, the audience or in, in the system of this capital planning kind of thing, but. From a, a board perspective. Uh, you know, I think the, the, the major oversight is our, our budget in our. Budgets to actual some of those kind of things, so setting the budget and are we actually tracking what we said we were going to spend? Uh. When I think about capital, I think about budget, scope, schedule budget, that kind of thing. Uh, scope is pretty well staff-driven, uh, and monitored, um, so I'm, you know, but what happens in the, the projects, in the programs? But, uh. There are places where the board can somewhat watch that, so the quarterly report came out this, this quarter, Frank's going to talk some more about that. Uh, but embedded in that quarterly report is information like the E L one, so I'll go through a couple of those things and, and go. Those examples, but schedule, uh, is staff-driven and monitored. I, I would argue that probably that is the least monitored and reported on thing. Uh, in our process here, and so I'll talk a little bit more about that one. We'll start with, uh, budget. Um. And are we successfully spending the money that we said we're going to spend, because that's really important to them. We keep spending what we say we're going to spend, right? So what I did is, um, you, you know, from the quarterly report, uh, you can get in there and you can look and you can see that, uh, the capital is, uh, about. For this year, 2024, we're about 21% in big water and 19% in an electric spin. That's on a straight line. A sort of assumption, so you would expect at the end of the quarter that, that we would have 25%, yes, thank you.
Thanks for the vacation.
Good job. Um, I don't even have to think and now you are. Uh, but just for fun, um. Uh, just for fun, I, I threw in the last couple of years to see, uh, show the performance of how much of our capital we spent. Um, you know, more successful in water for various reasons, uh. Like request successful, but you can, you know, to get to that because the large type, type three project there tends to. Swing that around a lot. You'll also see, uh, the, um. A little bit further breakdown, uh, in the E L one in the quarterly report there, so. There isn't something on this document, uh, that says, hey, uh, current substation, right? But it's, it's pretty well buried in this kind of, uh, language here and, and I, we were just discussing. Monday, the other day about maybe making that a little clearer so you can pull distinct projects out of this recording, so. Hopefully we'll get to that. Um. Current substation, so here's an example of a project that, um. It's a multi-year project and so I was just talking about yearly budgets, right? Uh, most of our big projects spread across two, three, sometimes five years. So it's really hard to capture what's going on with a project in any distinct year. Uh, this is a good, good example of it. But, uh. The, uh. Again, back in the E L one, you'll find that this gives you a good idea of, okay, it started in January, it's ending in December. And, uh, it started with this cost in mind and now we're at that cost, I mean, that's a lot of cases to, to. Uh, even though it's here, it talks about why. Excuse me. Uh, but basically construction, supply chains. So, uh. One of the, the challenges, uh, for a multi-year project like this, there were some delays and some of those things. And the project delays, uh, it is more expensive despite delaying it because of inflation. Uh, so when we finish this though, what's next, uh, we're moving out, uh, to the west side of town, we're doing that Janabo. Yes, and, um. Here, so. This is some of the, our generation work type two projects, um. Uh, uh, one of the things that's happening, it's a, a big expenditure is the, the overall of, of, the turbine generator four out of international paper. Uh, we just updated our, uh, the freestyle, our contract through 28. IP and part of that includes refurbishing that generator. Probably be seeing some more on that, um. The, the Walterville, couple of projects going on there, once the, the four bay repairs, so these are both damn, uh, safety issues. Uh, trying to address, um, convergence. Needs and, and four bay problems that were. Surprised the, the one this year that emerged is the, uh. Leak and so we're waiting on just some information to decide how much that's going to cost and how much that's going to affect the other cities. So that happens, you know, things pop up, that's another risk to, to our plan, things pop up. Uh, and cause you to shift, spend money in different places. Over the five-year period that should average out, that was the idea, so. Uh, I'll just point out too, Leberg, um, has a project and so we did decide to, um. Shut down the, the, the system and all that, but in the meantime, uh, we need to do some mitigating work and so. Excuse me. Uh. One of the pieces of mitigation is to, we moved unit one to create more, uh, ability for more stormwater to flow out of it essentially, so. That's what the guys are working on here. Uh, the project that that you might be interested in, so since the number of you went out and looked at the IP, um. Facility during the ice storm, this is the line between the Hayden Bridge switch station and international paper, uh, he, um, bowls completely went down. Um. Some pictures of the downed bowls, so, uh, uh. We've jumped into it, engineering, um, purchasing, uh, a lot of people are really working hard. Uh, bottom line is hopefully we'll get this back up and running in July, soon we can get our permitting. Straight build, uh, city. The other thing I wanted to point out was, uh, about this project and I mean, it seems sort of intuitively obvious, right? You build something new, but. During the course of building something new, you update your designs and your features and. Hopefully make things more resilient. And that's a big part of the capital plan is investing money over and over, a little faster than depreciation, hopefully. To keep the system alive. And, and reliable and up to date. In this case, hopefully we'll get some, some FEMA money, um, I know that's still up in the air, uh, just how much we'll get back from that. But, uh, so it's not always rates that, that fund capital. This is a project, uh, you're going to hear a lot more about next week, or sorry, next week, next month, uh, at the board meeting, Carmen Smith, that's our type three electric project, it's very big. Um, one thing I'll note, just to give you a, a sneaky peek at that, uh, is the. Total cost now is estimated to be $20 million more than it was the previous, the costs are going up. Um, and again, a lot of cases, uh, it's delays from. All kinds of things. Spreading costs. Switching to the, the water department, uh, there's, uh. Some, uh, the master plan calls for refurbishment of our major components in the system for earthquake proof, um. The other goal we've done, and this comes in from the strategic plan, is to increase resiliency. So increasing the, uh, paths for main transmission lines and increasing the number. Uh, and making the, the best force, um. Uh, more flexible, uh, in the ability to transfer water around, so. Uh, that's where the, the master plan for waters especially helped. Uh, this project, the Hilliard was part of W S forty, I believe, and then, uh. Next up is, uh, the transmission line continuing on down to connect, there's two crossings on the land. Uh, and this is going to help range those two and create some ability to move water back and forth. College Hill, uh, East Forty is wrapped up, you've heard a lot about that, um, they're to the, the. Feeling stage, um, that's all done. Uh, College Hill is about to, to start again, um, you might hear a little bit more about that in June, uh, hopefully we'll get a contract to bring. Start the demolition, part of the construction, but they've already been cutting trees. There's a, uh, historic mitigation work going, wrapping up, there's some tours, um. A goodbye party kind of thing, hopefully evolve in, uh, made aware of that. This being some of this, it's another smaller projects, the Shasta nine seven five, obviously much smaller than the, uh. Other big, of course, but they're still just part of the course to the people who need those and experience. And source, uh, is, is moving along, we're, we're in the, uh. Environment permitting and, uh, in the planning, this, um, and use planning. Uh, that's one of those tedious, careful processes that just takes a long time, but. Making enough progress, we're, we're really hoping to, uh, start construction in 2026, so. Shared services, uh, I think a lot of times when we think about capital, we think about pools and wires, um. The pipes and this kind of thing, so, uh. Takes a lot more work and running utility than, than that, and so, uh, here's a couple of pieces of. Uh. That shared service that, that's really important and foundational to the work that we're going to want to do. And again, that gets that strategic plan, right, these are laying foundations to help us balance our, our supply and demand. Um, kinds of things and, and help our customers, uh, but, uh, E E S, the. It's got a lot of people working on it right now, working really hard. And it's in scope and. It's on budget, there are some pressures for scheduling and, and budget a little bit. Um. Uh, I think the really big news on E E S is the, uh, change in season two. Uh, the, they're going to shift to, uh, they call it the continuous improvement pause or something. Uh, but essentially it's a time to step back, hey, we've installed a bunch of stuff, um, set a bunch of new processes in motion. Uh, let's take a year and make sure we're getting it right before we jump into trying to implement more things and. And it'll also give us more time to, to prep and plan for some of those other projects. Uh, one of the things that may have fallen under the radar a little bit is our, uh, modernizing our G I S system, uh, in software, and I couldn't even pretend to tell you what that means technically. Uh, but I would tell you how important the G I S, uh, system is, is that it is our record of choice for all our, our, most of our assets, right? It is what makes us be able to design and operate and run our system, that's really, it's no longer paper, I did, it's, it's in the. That's in this G I S system and it's also the foundation for the outage management system. But the good news there is, uh, it started this month. And will maybe, uh, hopefully, um, be done by the end of the year, but maybe five a little bit, but it's under budget by 300,000, so that's good. Uh, another thing that you might be curious about, a shared service that's, uh, got some money in the plan, um, is the property we bought out here, um, so. Berlson, whatever. Uh, we just, uh, awarded bids the, as. Uh, last month, I believe. Uh, to start construction on, uh, building out that area out there, so there's actually six phases identified. Do as much or as fast and as little as we need to do to help balance this, the plan over a period of time. Uh, that's another thing that what Tyler, his team will do and Molly, uh, people that manage your. Capital plan as a whole, they'll look at income sources and they'll also look at projects and how they can smooth those out to make sure our rates stay, uh, balanced. The. Art and red here is what will happen first, so, uh, headquarters, we're actually sitting right over here right now, curve that rock. Uh, Berlson's right here and Roosevelt's right here, so this is the origin that will be built, um, but here. There will be a road connecting uh, the drive out here over here to Bertelson as part of the next phase. But this will increase our ability to uh, store it and park and. Be a lot more efficient with our operations. Uh, AMI, um, just wanted to give you a quick update on that. Um. We've uh, we're about ninety one percent installed on the electric meters. And uh, seventy nine percent in the water. Water's not a little slower, it'll it'll wrap up next year. Be expect that there'll be a handful of meters to to install next year. Cases and. Different types. So uh, budget's going well. Um, we're about half a million under budget on electric and. What's next? Uh, might be curious a little bit. So we want to put in some more, do more towers here in town. Um. Small part of the budget, but uh, really important to making sure we get reliable communications and data and those kind of things. Um, the other thing is we started uh, an analysis of what to do up river. Uh, there's a couple of options being looked at, but really the the one we're recommending is basically. Uh, using the same system we had hearing down. We did a number of radio studies. And it's, it seems like uh, despite the terrain and everything, we can cover ninety five percent, at least the needs of there. So that's that's the recommendation. Same system, uh, everybody gets the same features, so. Makes it consistent. Uh, with roughly the same as well. Risks, uh, capital plan risks. I'm gonna end on the downer note, I guess. There's still a lot of supply chain issues. Um, some things are getting better, um, and some are not. And so. Uh, I'm gonna detail the few new things, uh, but I really wanted to kind of highlight the the strategies that the folks are using on. Mitigate the supply chain risk. So. Uh, we're, one of the things we're doing is we're keeping our our stock inventories up to. Uh, higher than we did pre-COVID. So during COVID, we. Over orders, um, and so we're still keeping with that strategy. It's really paid off. You know, I storm, for instance, we were. Supplier choice around here, I guess you could say, but uh. Really getting creative uh, through creating new relationships, um. Creating some uh, business partnerships that we hadn't asked. Think another thing that's going on is is engineering and and purchasing, getting together and looking at the standards and requirements that we have. We really need widget X, if if widget Y will do. And so that takes a little bit of analysis and a lot of. Due diligence to make sure that what we get. We're also trying to create longer lead times because that's an issue with supply chains is lead times. So while we're real, uh, there's been uh, some discussion around, you know, domestic versus. Imported materials and where we're getting it from. We we don't have a real good way to track that now and separate things out. Except for trying to do that manually because we'd like to be able to answer some of the questions that the board has had around where does this stuff come from and. Couple of other things, though, I want to touch on, uh, and not necessarily a risk, but grant uh, programs, uh, are we getting all we can get? There's a goal, organizational goal around that. It's that's uh, we have options to get money to help the capital program. That's always good for for rigs, right? So uh, you've been very successful. We heard that's. Manager and she's done a terrific job. But we're letting uh, want to be use some more. Work on that program. So how will we get that internally or externally or whatever? Uh, that's somewhat of. Uh, inflation and I I hesitate to say John Brown might have been right, but maybe we underestimated. Uh, the the total uh, impact that the uh, the inflation has had on the capital program. And so. Uh, Frank just sort of coined a new term for me. It's the 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 cost per scope, right? The cost per scope is going up, so we have a scope that we want to do, but that cost is driving up faster than than traditionally it has. So. That's that's a real risk to the the capital plan as a whole. That's that's where we get to have expansions with. Board here. I think one of the things too that's interesting in this is um, and I I mentioned timing, right? So uh. As supply chains have gummed up things and things have slowed down, well, that inflation starts eating your lunch a little harder. And so we've had and experienced that along the way. Uh, in the the current substation was a really good, that that was probably should have been a two year. Project and it hit costs X amount of dollars. So uh, that's a risk that we're we're really trying to manage, uh. And then finally, uh, regulatory, environmental, uh, permitting, those kind of things. Those uh, those challenges that uh, sometimes we can't control uh, in many cases. Those tend to be discouraging for staff. Uh, it's one thing that to not have enough money and be challenged to to change your scope and all that. The the regulatory challenges. Pretty daunting because you don't be controlled in certain extent. So. Uh, those are the things that are impacting the capital plan and in some of the projects. Other questions?
All right, I'm gonna go first. Uh, you asked a question, I think, about a project specific updates, if that's helpful and um. From my perspective, at least, you know, to the extent that it's relatively easy for you all to provide updates on individual projects. I know that's the way my brain is working is like looking for the projects that I'm paying attention to and and so I think that's useful. Um. And as we replace like power poles that were destroyed by the ice storm, do we change our. Engineering assumptions for ice loading, I assume, for new poles?
Yeah, any sea ice loading has been kind of controversial subject and I was just talking yesterday about this, but um. So but the short answer is yes, we want, I think, half an inch to one inch or one inch, two inches, I can.
Okay. And then is that also an opportunity to upgrade the seismic standard for tools like that to happen at the same time?
Um, seismic standards don't quite apply. Um. There's uh, other. The wind and force and some of those kind of things, but I don't. I shouldn't say I I I'm not aware of seismic standards for poles, so I would have to get back to you on that. I. I hope to hear you fine.
Frank, sorry. So um.
President McCray, the the pole is so like, it would have a tensile strength reading to it. But what we may might look into is the the actual, how the poles are mounted, and I say mounted. Uh, the the base, how we design the base of those poles, maybe impacted. So yeah, that's something we can look at.
I think the the force of the earthquake. Compared to the tension of the wires and the weight of the wires, it's pretty simple, but I don't, it's a curious question.
Right? I don't want to go too far down this rabbit hole, but but I'm but I'm gonna ask a couple of questions. So the Walter Walter Mill four bay repairs. I think it said it was like two point nine million. Are we starting into that or is that scheduled?
I apologize. I was gonna get to that, uh, and I didn't get to the generation, so I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Yeah, my my question really is, are we gonna start investing money in repairs there before we've had a chance to look at the rest of the canal?
That's a really good, good idea, uh, because the especially with the emergence of that other leak detection. It's uh, there's gonna be some analysis and um, I believe your team has already started looking at finances, started. Looking at this same conversation we're having about Leberg and Walter.
I am.
You know. How much money do you put into it before it's uh? No return.
Yeah. Yeah, I I would, the I I think the plan throughout the summer is to do a pretty detailed assessment. We really can't do anything there without going through a third process. So there's gonna be a number of checks and balances. Or you have to get for approval to do any testing, to do do all all different kinds of things. So. Before we end up spending a lot of money, we'll understand what our position and assessment is.
Oh, yeah. Lisa?
Uh, Frank covered, Frank and Rod covered it well. Um, just a a couple items of note, we are, we do think it's gonna take uh. Another couple of weeks before we have options for a potential re- repair plan back from our dam safety consultants. Um, coincident with that, we're also doing uh, financial analysis. Uh, so by the time we get some estimates on repair options, we'll have a sense of. Uh, what the impact might be. So um, a- all of that would need to come to the board, presumably the amount of spend required to repair. The canal um, meets the board threshold. So you'll be seeing more information on that before we move forward. With any spending.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. Um, all right, so one last question. Um, the second source uh, water admin building that we have there. Do we have a seismic standard established for what that will be?
All all that design meets all the latest seismic standards.
But this, so that my understanding is the current seismic like barrier, the minimum of his life safety, which is I can get out without it falling on my head, which is awesome.
Okay, I follow you.
And then the the one step above that is immediate occupancy, that the building can still be used and is likely repairable. And I just wonder if. We're building to that higher standard. I don't expect us to be building to the like fire station standard where everything is fully functional, but. I'm curious about that. So.
And now, do you wanna dig stab at that?
Oh, yeah. Uh, this Wally, um, I call it engineering supervisor. Yeah, and the second source is designed to be. Basically fully operational within twenty four hours after an event. And um, so it's almost to the top rating that we're designing the that that plan for.
And does that, does that include the office space, the? Not not just like.
Yeah, we haven't. We haven't gotten into the detailed design, but any components that would be necessary for the plant to be. Operational treating water would be designed to that standard. So if there's SCADA computer systems inside that office, so that areas, those would be designed for that. That makes sense.
That makes sense. Yeah, I just voiced my view on this a- again, where I know it was an issue with this building, um, you know, and 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 I. Bill questioned the decisions that were made. Um, I think, you know, the in terms of office space and having functional space that stat can work on, even if it's not. Essential to running the water treatment facility, any office space after seismic movement, I think will be super critical and it seems like a huge opportunity. On the design and um, to bone up the standard for all the office space that would be constructed at that site. I I don't know. I don't know what the analysis is there. I my my understanding is that the additional cost is typically on the order of five percent and it seems like a premium that's. At least considering.
Yeah. It it it's a very robust plant and you know, we know we're, we've invested a lot in our Hayden Bridge plant, but you can only invest so much. In an old facility. And uh, we need this to operate, so it's. Yeah, very robust.
Thanks. And then the last thing, um, on this one, this agenda item, um. I was looking all over through my packet. I'm like, where is the briefing on this? And I didn't, there there wasn't one. Uh, anyway, I just wonder when we have the, when we have items that don't have a background or if we can just flag that on the agenda. That'd be great. So I have other. Questions, comments for.
I would quit, but yeah, he's brown. So I lost the argument on the inflation thing, even though they acknowledged it. But in our five and ten year capital plan, we only use three percent. Are we gonna go back and? Three to five percent. Are we gonna go back and revise that? For the cost per. I don't know what the current assumptions will be, but that's part of what we'll uh, we'll cover next week or next, gosh, it keeps saying next week, next month. Uh, when we come and talk about the capital plan assumptions.
Uh, I was just gonna say that the the near term assumption will be more on five percent. The long term may be closer to three. And I think we have some decisions to make around. The scope that drives what we need to do. I mean, that that gives you a certain allocation of funds. Uh, but I think as an organization, we have to take a really close look at the work that we're driving. Um, and how that impacts the funding that we need and that those kind of work hand in hand.
All right, anything else? All right, moving on to quarterly strategic and operational report for Q one. And this is all roses and unicorns.
President McCray, commissioners, good evening. Um, for the record, that Frank Lawson, the general manager. Um, usually when I give a quarterly report, it's it's really a roster of various accomplishments and all kinds of of great news. Um, I really do feel like. And when you have difficult times, it it both builds and reveals an organization's character and and we have a certain. A number of opportunities in front of us to to show our character. Uh, based on some of the the results that we're seeing and some of the challenges, quite honestly, that we're seeing. First of all, um, on the electric side specifically, this does not apply to the water. We saw a pretty substantial. Um, it's called change in net position. You might also, if you're familiar with financial terms, that's basically your net income. Uh, was roughly eighteen million below our forecast for the first quarter. That was a combination of a couple of things. There were some operational uh, impacts, as we know, from the ice storm, both uh, uh, from the. Recovery perspective, but also from the uh, lost generation perspective. Uh, we also, other than those that that week or so, um, the quarter was very mild from a temperature perspective. And so. Load was off significantly and the combination of those two things uh, drove that that eighteen million dollar uh, variance from budget. We also uh, in in looking at that, um, and and I will say that this is not something that we're just going to say idle. You know, stand idly by and come to the board at the end of the year with an eighteen million dollar budget amendment. Uh, we think this is uh, part of our character is to look at these things and understand. How it drives decisions and what we can do about it going forward to mitigate that. Now, one of the things that we're keeping a very close eye on and it's it's not a very optimistic um, piece of information, but. Um, the Columbia Basin water situation, usually when we come to the board with a budget amendment, it's because we have extra water. And therefore, uh, we can offset that uh, additional expenditure with uh, more than um. The that amount of revenue. Uh, right now, the Columbia Basin is about eighty percent of its mean. It's about eighty nine percent of what we budget because we do budget that a little bit conservatively, but you you think about roughly ten percent below our budget. Again, on the wholesale side primarily of of that. We we also in the in the quarter, you know, we we talked about the storm events and that was a challenging uh, um. Event for us, but there's also some some lingering effects to that. I think we. We responded to it, but the recovery from that goes a little bit beyond that, particularly on the electric side, but not just on the electric side. It had some water. Significant water disruption as well. Uh, our safety incidents uh, per exposure hours was up. Um, I think you saw. A number of different pieces of work, um, that um, uh, we um. Have fallen behind on some of that directly related to some of that is something I'll talk a bit, a little bit more about. Going forward. Really feel like right now we have stretched the organization pretty significantly. You can exercise your muscles, you can stretch your muscles as an organization, but you also have to be careful not to tear your muscles. Um, I think I I feel like we're a little bit on the edge. Uh, we've stretched the organization. I think it kind of reflects in the fact that our our. First two goals, in particular, uh, the organizational goals that are centered on operations and um, compliance. Um, are uh, below target um, from from our perspective. Uh, we've also, um, and I think Rod touched on it a little bit, uh, we've seen some pretty. Um, substantial pressures on the the cost to scope ratio. Um, which is really, you know, what are, it's it's one thing to have a budget, but at the end of the day, uh, we want to be able to. Execute projects. We're very asset intensive organization. We need to be be able to both operate, maintain those and also replace those as needed. Um, and. And while we can, we have a certain amount of risk type projects that we can turn the dial up and down on. Right now, we need to take a really close look at where we're going to turn the dial and still maintain and get done what we need to get done. The current substation is a really good example of that. I think all of the commissioners visited the current substation. You met Philip Peterson, the project manager, very good project manager. But there were some challenges along the way relative to contractor availability. We buy parts and pieces with a really heavy content of of copper, of materials. And so we're seeing probably an extra pressure on those because they cost a lot to ship. They cost a lot to produce. And so with commodity prices and transportation costs going up, we're not just seeing contractor related pressures. We're seeing a lot more than sort of typical inflation on some of those items. Just quickly to look at the goals, I did mention that the first two goals, which I would describe as the blocking and tackling of the organization, this is really something that we're going to work with the management team on and take a look at. I guess I would describe it as maybe rebalancing our investment portfolio. We're going to have to take a look at the work that we're doing and how we prioritize that work. There's really important preventative maintenance that we need to do on our assets. Of course, compliance adherence is something we thought was important enough to actually identify as a separate goal this year. We're a little bit behind in some of those areas and we need to take a look at how we can address these issues given the resources and the financial pressures that we're also under. As you can imagine, some of these projects are really hard emotionally for an organization who likes to get things done. And you have a regulatory environment that requires a different level of skill than someone who's a project manager, for example, who probably gets frustrated with the fact that things move slowly. And so we're going to have to look at our workforce and how we address going forward through the balance between those who deal with things like regulatory and administrative overhead versus project execution. There's some updates on here that I won't before you, since you had this presentation ahead of time, especially. And then there are a number of things that are on track. We do have, and Goal Three I mentioned, we're looking at the labor market specifically. We're trying to balance that with the needs going forward, especially under some of the changing operating environments that we're working in and some of the different talents that we need to bring in going forward. We're in the process of looking at and socializing some of the results from our employee engagement survey that was done in February. The EES project, Rod mentioned that a little bit in his presentation. The scope piece has been actually very successful from the standpoint of wanting to standardize on just available technology and not do a lot of customization. That has led to pretty good acceptance rate on the testing phase, which we've moved from building, the build phase into the integration testing, which will take a lot of resources from the utility over the next several months. We are seeing a little bit of pressure on that schedule. There's a lot to get done in this phase and then some slight cost pressures, although those were changes in scope, not necessarily inflationary pressures. We changed some licensing around, we extended a little bit, we added some integrations to things that we thought were important. Those were fairly minor relative to the budget, but those were not driven for the same reasons that we've seen project cost escalation and things like substations and raw materials. We're in process of looking again at rate design. We have on the agenda, talk about that with the board in August. We're making progress on the Integrated Resource Plant actions from last year. The board recently approved a consultant to look at the demand response capability. For example, that assessment was as part of that work. And then, well, shown as below target, I think you probably noticed in the report that we have pending applications for about $12 million for grant work that aligns with things that we think align with our strategy. But it's below target because we want to establish a more rigorous process to develop and understand when we will apply for grants, under what conditions. And grants are not free necessarily. They come with a certain degree of overhead and they also come with an opportunity cost and we need to make sure that as an organization, we're not chasing money that ends up having a detrimental effect in some other part of the organization. And so that's why this one is listed as below target. It's not that we're not doing a good job of going after grants and working on those. It's the process that initiates that work and manages that work. So there's a lot on our plate right now. Commissioners, really appreciate your support in that. I wish I had just the roster of all the accomplishments for the quarter. There doesn't mean that there aren't some things that have gone really well also across the organization. But I think it's fair to say that we have some challenges in front of us, some work to do both on the operations maintenance, preventative maintenance, and then how we're scoping and looking at capital projects and budgets going forward. And fortunately for, I'm looking at Tyler in the back and looking at a few others and Deborah, fortunately, we're coming up on the time when we normally assess our long term financial plans and our investments going forward. And so the timing will be. President McCray, I'll turn it back to you for questions.
Thanks.
Just a really quick question. On the other funding opportunities, we had, there's 11 million pending applications, but we had, I mean, I know this is for this quarter, but we had 20 million that. Is that in order or was that all of last?
Running total is somewhere around, and I say running total, this probably goes back several years. It's somewhat, we'll get you the exact number, but it's, this is just pending this quarter. It does not include what we got up to this point. So, and I want to say it's somewhere between 10 and 20 million.
I guess there's kind of getting at, what is the target? Because this is saying it's below target, but that seems like there's a lot in the mix that's.
Yeah, the target in this case is not a number. It's not a dollar amount that we're chasing. It's, the goal was specifically written around developing a process to manage this and we're below target on that pursuit.
Okay, got it. I mean, we have challenges, I think. Alone, I mean, we're every business, nonprofit, et cetera, that. I mean, through January's weather event, it wasn't just a week, it was weeks following it that were impacted. So it makes sense that we have similar impacts and it's unfortunate that we can't get some of that. I mean, some of it we can get reimbursed from FEMA, but I think we're seeing that shortfall in the monetary side of it because we can't get that funding back because it's a revenue related, it's not an expense.
There's also, and we'll keep our eye on the fact that usually when there's a FEMA event like this, there's resiliency grants, which in 2016, we left that with, I think it was 16 different projects across the organization to improve resiliency. And so there may be some opportunities that come out of that specifically around that. But it's, I think some of this has been challenges because of the storm. But I also think that we just have some challenges in the regulatory environment, the inflationary pressures that we're seeing. I can't say that that's storm related. Those are challenges that are maybe a little bit more fundamental that we need to roll up our sleeves and address.
And we've seen them coming for, we're not, still in the.
And we did have a really, I think, good presentation. Deborah and Aaron and Tyler were part of our presentation to the rating agencies. Is that last week?
Last Thursday.
Seems like a year is out.
And while there's some challenges and they recognize that, we also are in the financial position to be able to address those. And a lot of that has to do with the oversight that the board has provided through the years. So really appreciate that.
Two quick questions. Number one, the cost for, on energy efficiency conservation, the cost per megawatt hour saved for residential was 950. But for residential limited income, it's $7,158. Is that an outlier or is it really that, why is it so much, I mean, 10 times more expensive to save energy in limited income housing?
Well, it's generally the amount of the kinds of projects and the amount that you're investing in those incentives versus the amount of megawatts you're actually saving. This is a discussion that we want to have with the board, specifically around this program is, what does the board see as the objective of the Energy Efficiency Program? Is it to save megawatt hours? Where you're looking at the cost per megawatt hour being important? Or is it as a social service to provide some kind of, I'll say, temporary financial relief to a certain segment of our customers, which I call it temporary because, yes, you can say that this will save money, but because we have a really high fixed cost, if you're not, if you're not capturing all those fixed costs in a fixed charge, that's temporary. You then have to amortize that fixed cost over less megawatt hours, which then results in a rate increase. So I think ultimately we have to have a discussion or around what are the ultimate objectives of this? Is it to save megawatt hours? Always been historically part of it, but what role does the social side play in that?
The second question is, I know one of the epic fights that I heard, discussions, I should say, that I had at a board level was when we went, we used the budget at 85% water and now everybody argued to go to 90. Now it looks like it's 80. And you, how long do you think it'll be? If, I mean, consistently see 80% water, are we going to maybe consider going back to budgeting at 85% instead of 90?
Yeah, what we do on the electric side is we created this contribution margin risk factor number and that has represented two or three different things. One of them is a 90% water level in the near term in the budgeted year. The other one could be an impact on, unfavorable impact on wholesale prices that we're selling to, or it could be consumption related. Now, this was, in this first quarter, we had all three of those. But I do think at some point we have to look at what degree we're budgeting conservatively and how conservative does that need to be? There's pros and cons to being conservative in your budgeting. If you're too conservative, then that puts pressures on rates. If you're too liberal, then you take more risks and maybe it's appropriate in that case to balance that approach with having higher reserves. So there can be a trade off where we could, yeah, let's leave it at 90, but let's build a reserve. Bravsky's a point, that we have a certain degree to tap into and replenish or we conservatively, but we know that we're going to have to change what we do as an organization or adjust our rates.
So do you think that you'll see that as something that we'll just monitor and look at over the years because of climate change and things? Because they got a pretty bad water situation up north, I think.
Yeah, the the climate change models don't typically show that there's going to be a lot of decrease in water. What they tend to be showing is the, when that water comes and how it comes. It doesn't necessarily come as snowpack. It comes earlier in the winter period. So it's going to be a shift in when that generation is available. I think we'll have to put that into our modeling. There's also some diversification of resource where that could benefit. In other words, not being so tied to hydro in the long term. So I think that's a piece of it. I think all those things would have to be looked at together.
Yeah, my question is about climate change. So when I look at the noteworthy in the quarter and some of the really big things that have happened, they're due to climate change. So the low 80% water here, ice storm. And I know, like, we can talk about budgeting and rates of inflation, but like, how have we taken, how have we changed what we plan? We can't know if there's going to be another ice storm or really hot event over the summer, but like, we do know that these things are happening more often. So how do we plan for it so that we're not always kind of playing catch up?
Well, I think one of the things that we have to look at when we think about our strategic plan is the role of resiliency and what we're going to be resilient to. And how do we roll that into the decisions that we're looking at? Whether that's the resources that we pick on the generation side? How do we allocate and how much effort do we put in on the water side to things like conservation of water, which relative to some drier parts of the country, we really don't tap into that resource very much, at least now. And what's financial resiliency look like? All those in the context of what you're saying. Climate change is a variable and it's becoming more volatile. We, I know historically we've looked at climate change as our impact on the climate, not as much our climate's impact on us. And, you know, I think Rod and I were talking the other day on wildfire mitigation, really diving into what are we doing to make ourselves more resilient to those kinds of impacts as well? So I think it's something we're going to have to be very intentional about in how we do our designs, how we select our resources, how we do our forecasting. And probably an area that we've maybe underestimated a little bit. I mean, there's all kinds of resilience. I would say that all kinds of volatility, that's one of, I don't know how many fingers I have, but there's. Rod, you were going to jump in.
I think there's a natural hazard mitigation plan conversation coming up. And I can't remember if we're doing a correspondence or, we do need to put it in front of the playbook. There's components to that where that comes up. That's how to respond in some ways, but it's including thinking ahead. How to build resilience is, I mean, that's the strategic plan piece that we're driving on capital.
Financial piece of that, I mean, there's a cost.
Absolutely. There is a cost to it and we. This comes back to really something that I kind of feel like we, in the strategic plan that we started in 2018, one of the very first parts of that, we talked about customer confidence and building customer confidence through our financial management, controlling rates, executing things well. Kind of felt like we were making really good progress on that. That's a prerequisite to doing a lot of the other things we want to do. And we're going to have to be really diligent about making choices between and around liability, resiliency and cost. Those are all things that are going to tug and push on each other as we decide what we're going to do. The thing that I think we really have to take a look at here is what we do drives our money and it drives our workforce. It's not the other way around. We're not an employment agency and we're not a bank. So we have to really take a look and I'm going to say kind of press the reset button a little bit. What are we going to prioritize over the next few years in particular as we deal with this volatility? We can't do everything and that's the thing that we're going to have to work with management on. We're going to have to work with the board on. We're going to have to be selective. Otherwise, we are just going to be throwing money at it and that's not, our customers aren't going to appreciate if we're not doing that wisely and intentionally.
John? Yeah. A couple things stuck out to me. I'll go on the easy one first because it makes sense. On the grant side, you know, I think. you know, I think it's what you said was was spot on. You don't want to chase grants to just get money. Make sure that the grants forward our strategic goals. Because if you're just going out there to, oh, there's a grant for two hundred thousand dollars and but it's not focused. Sure that that's going good. And it sounded like that's one you were. The one, the other one that that is really complicated, but I also think is really important is the compliance one. And the and the interaction between compliance that we have control over and compliance that we don't have control over. So there's compliance that, you know, people just are just throwing things at us and saying, you've got to do this. But then there's other ones that we're not in compliance. And that may be because we don't have the bodies to fill out all the forms and do what it takes to be be in compliance. And in in those cases, that's time and that's money, right? Because if we're not in compliance, okay, that pushes out a project a year. We see what a year does to the costs. So the ones that we, you know, that are thrown at us and just said, you've got to jump through this hoop. Okay, we got to jump through that hoop. But making sure that we have the people that know one where the hoop is and and how high we have to jump to get in there. It's something that I'm hoping will make that needle go a little bit further. Because the the ones that just get thrown at us are tough. But the ones that we have direct control over that really adjust the timing of these projects, they're the ones that can be really expensive to be in. I I hope that that's something that we're looking at.
Oh, yes, I I think that so even the tough ones, as far as I know, all the easy jobs are gone, Commissioner. We it doesn't. It doesn't get us off the hook. I think what we realize and in this, in the context of the workforce, we have to recognize that having assets, managing those assets and executing projects is not just an issue of doing a design and putting in a piece of equipment. There there are regular, the regulatory environment that we operate under today is much different. And it it's changed significantly in the last five to ten years. So we have to have the right mix of. There's some people that love compliance work. Not me, but it's there's there's people and and Rod and I were talking about this earlier. We have to adjust the mix of the re of the workforce resources that we have that have the right combination of people who love to execute projects, people who love to design things, and also people who love to operate and manage the administration and the overhead associated with the regulatory work. Now, we we there will be regulatory things that are thrown at us. Some we expect, some of them we don't. But we do need to execute and be compliant as part of our obligation as an organization. And we'll have to adjust our resources. So we, I I think agree with that, and we have to take that head on.
Yeah, although the last thing goes to what Commissioner Brown said, and that's the, you know, setting that bar on the water, right? And and knowing that that has an impact on rates, right? If we say we're going to eighty five, we're going to eighty percent in our long term financial plan, that means we've got built rates to be able to substantiate that. And so I look forward to that conversation with the long term financial plan comes, because I'm sure that'll be one of the one of the key, the dials that we can turn. And and looking at that and and being able to figure out something that would be helpful for me when that comes up is what exactly that rate impact is? If we were to go from ninety percent to eighty five percent to eighty percent, what actually would that do to a to our rate payers and and how much percentage that would happen? Giving you that heads up going forward so that we don't have to ask that at that point, that come back would be helpful.
I I agree, Commissioner. I think there's certain sensitivities that we need to be able to to show. That's one example, right? The sensitivities around what work we decide to do and what work we decide to do is another one. The the thing about reserves and and money is that constantly have to come back to the fact that when we have on the electric side was a hundred and thirty one million dollars, that's not our money. It came from our customers and we we are managing that and using that to mitigate risk. But it's not an empty supply. And we have to be really calm about that.
I just wanted to take a couple, one minute to make a couple of comments. One, when we get stressed, I think, as you were pointing out at the beginning, like, there's an opportunity. It really kind of shows us what we care about. Think, I think that's valuable. I also want to acknowledge there is just like a palpable weight in the room. I know staff are carrying this. All of you packing around this weight of frustration from this challenge. So I want to acknowledge the work you're doing carrying that and also the work you're doing to keep everything going in the way it needs to go. And I just want to call out that this and and not just in the room, but I suspect staff online too are in the same spot. This organization really does a ton of work to manage risk really carefully. And I know it's a tight squeeze right now, especially with the last quarter and probably last couple of quarters. But also, having been on this board for a few years now, this is not the normal circumstance, right? There's kind of a convergence of really challenging dynamics that are kind of pressing right now, but I don't think that's probably forever. Anyway, I just I have a tremendous faith in this team and also appreciation for the work that you all do to keep the ship upright and and, you know, moving in the right direction. So thank you for the work. Thank you for the burden that I know you're all carrying. And I know it is better not too far down the road.
I just made one comment about that. Sure, I I do think that there's, while we see the the risk challenge that we have to mitigate, and some of that's financial. We also are driving the organization pretty hard just from a things that we're doing perspective. You think about the EES project. Yeah, there's gonna be seventy people working on that over many hours, including extra time and overtime to to the overtime weekends, what whatever. And we're pushing an organization pretty hard. In some ways, we have to take a look at where the relief points are. And the, you know, we think about continuous improvement from an operational perspective. We have to do the same thing to eliminate waste and develop priorities around our decision methodology and what things we may or may not choose to put off a little bit. And we may have to work with the board on some of those. I'm just giving giving a little stuff on that.
Yeah, my observations, this board sees that and is prepared to make, you know, adjustments to make sure that we're not burning people out.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other questions, comments on this topic? Not we'll go to the next item, which is the process for the next GM performance evaluation. No, no, you shouldn't. This is just our conversation, it looks like, at least the way it's queued up right now, right? So this is for us to discuss. I actually wonder. I'm looking at the time and wondering if we're prepared to have this conversation or if we should test till the next meeting.
I think we
Is that, are you, does that cause you concernation if we wait another month to provide some additional feedback?
I don't care if you ever talk about it. No, it doesn't. It doesn't. I think we were trying to do it. It's refreshing your mind.
Yeah.
I felt the process was helpful for me, if that's available to you. But we, there's nothing magical about doing it.
Yeah, I'd propose we bring this back next month, and if that's okay, they're ready. I think that's all right. We'll do that. Then the going on to future board agendas.
Just a couple of comments. In the the GM report, the commissioners were given some information around the the planned agenda for the river trip, also for the the sort of format and agenda and process for the Upriver Board Meeting. I will say that doing both of those in the same year and the same month is a pretty heavy load on staff. And we want to take a look at maybe alternating some of those going forward, doing one one year, doing one the next year, unless there's some pressing topic. But that those were included in the GM or that's the proposals for them.
To do the Upriver jerky, so it's a separatory thing. Hey, some services we offer, storms are coming. That was better. It's it. I don't know, we got moved because we wanted to respond to that.
This this spring, there were a couple of reasons we moved to the spring. There were a lot of updates around our Upriver operations that we felt giving them heads up going into the summer and the construction and things that might impact them or directly going part of that. That was a big reason we moved into the spring. Given the fact that we now have the ability to dial in to board meetings and have people testify, I would propose that we look, unless there's a pressing topic, we look at it every and but that's something for the board.
I appreciate all the time and planning that's gone into all the discussion topics. Anyway, I I just think
Well, Dr. Jen and Adam are facilitator around how flexible we can priority topics are.
Thoughts about Frank's proposal of doing that for your meeting every other year? Not supportive of that. You know, float truck.
I maybe, maybe.
They once again gave it rains on thirty. Float truck, kill on thirty.
So it sounds like keeping that river meeting, but maybe every other year on that. So wondering if we want to start thinking about a portrait. It was for over the last time of year, right?
Yeah, they just don't count up. Yeah, that's
Why? For that in the mix, it'll be more deaths. So do you remember a few minutes ago, us talking about the things we're not gonna do?
I was having discussed, I was thought proposing an additional one. I was thinking if we do every other year, maybe one of those every other year is a coast fork. We're thinking about water that we're picking up.
And I'm also, you know, we have the Upriver meeting for a thousand customers, we have ninety thousand customers down here. We're doing all these special formats to engage those customers. You're not doing anything down here. I don't know. It it really feels really lopsided. And I understand they're not represented. So we're trying to, you know, reach out to them in a different way to help. And and there's a lot of projects out there that affect them in ways. So I appreciate that. But I also have some expectation, because we do have the ability to log in. They can write to us, send an email to us. We could do smaller things where we go up and have like coffee meetings. Like, we could do something that's less of a burden on staff. It's not a full twenty person staff involvement. That's typically, we go up river and we have all of the people in this room. Seems like overkill. I just took new coffee meetings for same representative and, you know, you set up a times like an hour, go up there, we just chat and they ask questions and you talk to them about the things they care about. And you give like a five to ten minute thing and it's the discussion time.
So maybe they wouldn't necessarily agree, but I don't know. I just thought that would be a really effective way to get through what we have to say.
Well, I'm, what I'm hearing is there's some different ideas. That's different perspectives and we'll a little bit more intentional conversation around it.
Yeah, I appreciate this a little bit. Personally, I'm gonna produce that.
Fully understand and appreciate the fact that we have an entire history of presence and impact in this valley and still in the land watershed as well. So it's not, it's not to diminish that at all. It's to recognize that meeting people at the places where they are might look a little different depending on public.
Right? Anything else on your board agendas? We're rapid.
Yeah. I've had several calls from people construction downtown. And I know most of that's not us. I'm in City of Eugene and while there's this and that. You know, we had last week was six or seventh street was closed down with the eW trucks or in the afternoon. I'm headed back to all the way up to Chambers to get it through. Just wanted, just wanted to bring it up, you know, that there's a lot of construction. I mean, you can't plan your route downtown. With that any consistency. So just know that there is frustration out there in the in the community. And although it's not all about us, part of it is us. And it's, and I understand it's because you do them in conjunction with the with the street stuff, but just know that there's as far as people are seeing. John Brown says, our guys do the best job of coding it off and making sure it's all done right. There's an eW truck there. And so people see it. So that there's public perception out there that part of this problem down. And I don't know if there's anything we can do about it. I just wanted to bring it up because I've had several calls on on that saying that when streets closed and they pop up in it, it's eW truck. So I just wanted to bring it up.
We have an e-bike program.
It's bike month. You can bike around.
I I I don't, I would totally appreciate our role in that. Make sure that the right people.
As you alluded to this, for the record, though, that the road construction before roads are repaved and rebuilt, we go and do all the work underneath to make sure that we don't have to take into that road in five or 10 years. And so we're we're doing often, maybe not all of it, that often is driven by the city's plan for repaving and reconstructing roads. So we're being driven in large part by those road projects. Anyway.
And 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 they go to communications. I mean, you know, there was something today Jennifer Willer had to had to stand up and say, yeah, we're sorry, we're trying our best. Maybe we
E-bomb joke aside, sorry about that. I'm sure that the right people are aware of it. And we make sure that they're
On that topic. If there is the capability to not start projects, like or you get rush hour, because I've seen that along some of those major ulterials, like this have to go right now from four to seven? If you've been, I've seen some of those start. Some of them has been.
I'd just like to comment, I think with the staff and if the structure crews have been done, it's a pretty job. I've lived in we've had things last eighteen months and it's been the most challenging. If you want to buy this in a parking lot, half hour, hour to time, and you're not even and it's been a disaster. It's telling us the city does well, but trucks is supplied. We don't know concrete, so we can't go block it off. Let's see, use the hours. Well, the hours are plenty. It's a disaster. But we have courses that have been very professional. My life is all things that you're ready. I can sit there and say, that's them. So it's, it's been a disaster. Yeah, we're getting some bad when you're on, yeah, I mean, they won't, they can they can shut it down at four o'clock. Free basketball. So you watch it and it is, it is no fun, but it's six months.
We'll make feedback seriously and we'll make sure the right people. We'll make the feedback seriously and we'll make sure the right people. Who that we can. Right, I turn, thank you.
No, that's why. And I just, literally, by.